Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It's 5 o'clock and we've got some important business to tend to tonight and try to get our general fund balanced. Again, I would ask that everyone here remember that we're going to have differences of opinion. That be -- those differences be handled respectively respectfully of everyone's feelings. We've also got some considerations of those things that are requested from the community to assist the community in various aspects of serving the community. Although these aren't necessarily government functions, we developed a paradigm in this nation where the government does reach out and give handouts to community organizations to serve the community in various capacities. So again, we'll be considering those. And I would ask that we keep in mind, again, civility and as we discuss those things because each of those that have asked for those various contributions are very important to our community. And so we need to consider that with wisdom and the best way that we can. I just want to also give you a quick update on a couple of things that do directly or indirectly affect our budget. We're still -- we are in the process of hiring a city administrator. I just sent out packages for our team to review today. Looks like we have at least seven qualified candidates, 11 have applied, and they will be graded. One of the things that we will be looking for is someone that fits that capacity that can write grants. As you know, grants are a very, very important thing. One of the grants that we did apply for and had hoped to apply for was a GOED grant to tear down those excess buildings on our excess property. We did find out today that GOED did make a decision and our excess properties are not -- do not fit in that. I guess I kind of feel and I'd like to write the governor and ask him, is GOED's governor's office, the economic development's purpose to beautify or is it to provide economic development? Because I'm a little disappointed that by tearing down two buildings in Hot Springs, we provide an opportunity to gain at least a minimum of eight workforce houses that will help our economy. But I just wanted you to know that that obviously will impact our budget going forward as we sell those lots. Whoever submits to that request for proposal is going to have to pay to tear those buildings down if they want. So we'll work on that as time goes on, but we want to bring that to everyone's attention on the council. With that said, I'll turn it over to Misty and guide us through.
Couple of updates since we met last. I met with Bob and Carol Ann and the mayor, and we do have some highlights and things to discuss, but other than that, I did meet with the department heads who had budget authority remaining this year and questioned what their intent was going forward. The council requested that. And through those conversations, we agreed to lower the 2018 budget request by an additional $5,500 so that cash applied is now down to $81,296. The decreases, I spoke with Billy Morrow. He agreed to cutting his street vehicle repair budget down. And if you want to update this on your packets, they've already been updated on these spreadsheets in --
What page?
Page 11 in expenditures and highway streets and roadways. Vehicle repairs, year-to-date, he spent 1,600 or 12% of his $13,000 budget. We had 10.
What number is that?
Vehicle repairs is 42510.
Okay.
I agreed to lower that to $8,000 from 10. Doesn't look like it'd do any harm. He agreed to that, so I went ahead and updated it on these spreadsheets since it was something that the department head stated they could live with, so I highlighted that blue. Two down in equipment repairs, 42530. We had that at $15,000. He spent 8% of his $17,000 budget year-to-date, although they do have a road blader that's being replaced currently and going to take up about $6,000 of this year-to-date budget. He agreed to lowering that from 15 to 13 for 2018. And street cleaning, if we do the one of five years financing for a new street sweeper, he agreed that $6,000 in equipment repair in the street cleaning budget, which -- I don't know if anybody's located that page yet. Street cleaning is on page 14. To lower that from 7 to 6. So there's the $5,000 that was lowered. And the additional $500 comes from the Mueller Center budget in expenditures, and that is on page 23. Supplies, which is 42610, agreed to lowering that to 800. He spent $240 year-to-date or 16% of his budget. After reviewing that and looking at the transactions, he agreed that could be lowered to 800. So that is a $400 decrease, and the additional 100 comes from the gas, oil, and diesel, which we lowered to 400. I don't know if I should go on to say some of the other areas that we identified in our meeting to -- yes?
Before you get into the specifics of that, since some of the folks that had asked the question that we had talked about yesterday, looking at the salaries and the FICA, the retirement, workers' compensation, group insurance, the expectation is that if a budget goes up from -- the salary budget goes up from 2017 to 2018, that all those corresponding costs should go up since they're hooked to that initial salary. And you gave a much -- you had explained to us Wednesday.
Yep.
I didn't completely, but you said you could refresh our --
Sure. So the two payroll taxes that we pay as a city that are tied directly to percentage of salary is OASI and FICA. The total of those two is 7.65%. OASI is 1.45 and the FICA is 6.2%. We hadn't done this in years past to calculate those amounts. It's a percentage that's directly tied to payroll. So here are where those percentages are, and we're a lot tighter on those numbers. Retirement is a 6% of your salary amount unless you're in the police department, and then it's 8%. So if we scroll down to the police department, you'll see that the equation in retirement, instead of the 6% that it is in all the others, is 8%. So these numbers that we estimated are tied directly to the payroll expense and should be very accurate. Besides retirement and the payroll taxes, unemployment insurance is 0.85% of the total payroll. And that's up to $15,000, so there is some cushion in those for employees that reach in excess of $15,000, they no longer have to pay that. But for calculating the amounts for budgeting purposes, because people can start and stop, we use the full amount for 0.85%. So that's how we get to those figures.
Misty, that leads me to a question then. On the police budget, for 2017, it was $355,000 budgeted for salaries, wages. They're requesting the same amount now, yet down on workman's comp. There's an actual increase of $2,000?
So workers' compensation rates are charged based on their salary amount and their job performance, and those vary from 0.39 for clerical people all the way up to police officers, law enforcement, 3.4, street and road crews, 6.65, and that's a rate times $100 of salary. In the past, we just paid our workers' comp based on the amount that we revealed, and we are now more accurately adjusting those percentages paid based on their job descriptions.
Okay, so there were the -- there really hasn't been an increase. There can be an increase for that because of job duties.
Yes. Yeah, that one's a harder one to figure than the ones that are just set at a certain percentage because those also are based on job duties, and so the police officers that are on the force have a higher percentage, but Trudy, who is the secretary, would be at the 0.39%.
Okay, is that also true then of unemployment compensation?
Unemployment compensation is 0.85% of payroll up to $15,000.
Okay, but this is showing an $800 increase in unemployment compensation based on the same budgeted salaries and wages?
Yep. So we took the full amount of salaries and wages and we times it by 0.85% to get to the figure.
So that would be why the increase.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is -- kill the messenger here. These are the areas. What the goal is, at least of the two council members in the area that we're visiting with, is to get this cash applied figure as low as possible so we're not using our savings knowing that we need to save for our big projects that are coming up. Working to get towards a structurally balanced budget and not using any cash applied in the general fund. We identified and they are highlighted in yellow is the ones we talked about before we left at the end of the day at the last meeting. Orange are new ones that we've added, but I didn't make any changes yet because we needed to talk about it as a full council.
These are just suggestions.
Yep. So the yellows in the parks were ones, if you remember, we left at the end of the last night. We didn't -- we said we'll go back and we'll talk about those, and there was a couple yellows in the plunge as well. But the other areas that were identified for potential decreases included one of the two roofs we're budgeting for. So either you saw the Mueller Center had an orange highlight, the Mueller Center roof, or the roof here at City Hall. This is only $40,000 of this is what's designated for the roof, or 42 --
44.
40,200. He will have some other building repairs, so he couldn't cut all 50 of that. The roof repair for General Government or for the City Hall roof, we have $50,000 there that's highlighted. Orange is a potential to decrease. I'll just get these all out and then we can talk about each of them. Legal, we discussed decreasing that to $40,000, thinking that historically, when we're not dealing with what we were in 2017, that $40,000 should be enough. We talked about removing the Welcome Park and the retaining wall and the picnic shelter from parks and --
Evans Plunge?
Yeah, I would talk about the 101 Fund first, and then we can get to that. The airport, after getting clarification from Ed that if he does go to full-time, which is what we have projected for salaries, he would not be taking advantage of the city's insurance. It does not hurt our current budget to remove that, knowing hopefully that he'll stay. That still leaves that position at full-time, but he has said that he's not interested in partaking in the city's insurance, so that $7,000 does not need to be in there if he's not and you're comfortable with that. And then the only other change then were those in parks, the retaining bouldering wall at Welcome Park, the $10,000 for the picnic shelter at Brookside. And I did get some additional information on this. I'm not sure it's one we want to highlight to take off. It's an existing shed at Butler Park that they will -- they tear it down to the bones and retain it, and they did that with another one, and their goal was to do it with this one for 2018. So I'm not sure if that one still needs to stay highlighted or not. Any concerns or questions on highlighting that one? We just left that highlighted because you were looking for additional information.
Will it be turned up?
Right.
That's all the -- they'll be finishing it?
Yep. It needs redone. It's an existing shed for summer rip, so. And they already redid one shed, and their plan was to redo another. Is everyone comfortable if I un-highlight that? You were just looking for an answer to that.
You could leave it highlighted. You could discuss it later, like everything else.
Well, it's not that much.
Okay, and then I asked additional questions. Ed Evans Plunge was able to obtain their capital improvement five-year plan. There are a number of items that they still hadn't completed yet this year, so all those budgetary lines where they hadn't spent 50% of their year-to-date amount, you asked me the question, she did answer those. And I think that the mural lighting and landscaping, she, when I say she, I mean Chris Hansen, the facility director of Evans Plunge, identified that as an item that's not of high importance to her. They'd much rather -- they'd be willing to cut that and would much rather have this be the high priority for their improvements for that.
Sure.
But any savings on Evans Plunge is not really going to affect general --
It won't, thank you.
The general fund, will it?
It won't, but one of the things we left up in the air and have not discussed yet is our 2-1-2 Fund, which is our additional sales tax fund. And any decrease in the subsidies to either the golf course or Evans Plunge will affect the cash remaining in that fund, which we could apply to streets or whatever. So, and then the golf course, we did a little more follow-up on the request for the carts. Got some additional quotes and clarified what the quotes were for. $29,900 would be our annual payment on a lease to own for 40 new carts. At the end of five years, we would own those outright. That would require us to increase this number. The other option is just a straight lease where for $15,200 annually, we would have a five-year lease. We would trade in or give them our 55 running carts, which is the same in both these offers, but one is a lease to own and one is just a lease. So I haven't changed those numbers, but those are the updates I have for you.
That's something to add. When I visited with her too, she said that they did give the options to pay just when they're making money.
It's six months. That's an annual for a six-month limit.
And also she did want the lease to own, which was what she specified.
But they did also ask the golf course advisory committee, and the one person who responded from that committee liked the lease option better.
At five years, you're going to want to own.
You can buy it out after the five years if you -- it's an option if you're happy with the carts and --
How old are ours right now?
2001.
So it's like two years.
Where would you like to start?
Let's go ahead and start with where we left off last time.
The parks.
Parks, yeah.
Okay, we had already gone through it, so the highlights are where we were not decided.
I did talk to Billy too. The retaining wall is not a necessity in Welcome Park. He said that is something to be taken off.
Does everyone agree?
I agree.
What do you all think about?
So they would get rid of the 23,000 completely?
For now.
Yeah.
Not like you'd never do it, but it's not going to be budgeted for to do in 2018.
He would like the picnic shelter, just those looks I have.
And that also is something we may be able to look for grants for once we get a city administrator on the work.
I guess my question is, we're looking at what was initiated as a five-year plan with what we paid for as a park plan. So as I understand it, this is part of that, being budgeted for part of that. I don't know exactly what the retaining wall -- I haven't had a chance to talk with Tracy in a while, but we said at our next meeting to see what -- you know, maybe there's some other options and that could be done a little more affordably. In fact, I talked to a couple of landscape people that had some suggestions regarding that. But I guess looking at that number to completely eliminate it, so are we just going off of the five-year plan then and not funding our parks this year? Is that what we would be doing?
We've got, you know, I mean, there's funds that we are -- I mean, the rest of the budget is funding the parks, so it's not -- that's the big -- go ahead.
We've done an awful lot for the parks in the last year. We spent a lot of money there. And we're just, I guess, asking, could we just skip a year? You know, you look at all that's new in the parks, all the money that's been spent there. It is part of the park plan, but we may not have the money every year to do everything that park plan asks for. We want to do it and we will, and I'm sure if that's what the park committee recommends, come back with it, try to get a grant for it, you know, but we're $81,000 in the rand.
We are still doing the irrigation at Brookside, which is part of the parks planned, and if we cut that out, there's still also the picnic shelter at Brookside to discuss. So there are some capital improvements being planned for parks in 2018. It's not like it's all stopping.
Well, I got some service groups too that are kicking in for that, toward that shelter.
Would it be possible instead of completely -- because I'm just sharing what was viewed when you look at Welcome Park and what you wanted. I was talking to the people who did our plan too, and for their idea with Welcome Park is what's the purpose of that park? And the whole purpose is to -- it's welcoming people to Hot Springs. So rather than, is there some consideration to maybe, when I go there, instead of the retaining wall being a big issue, it's just, really, it's just landscaping and maintenance really with it, because it doesn't look like there's been a lot done with it. And maybe even working with Hot Springs Beautiful, you could do something with the pods. So when people come in and that's their first stop in Hot Springs, they don't just see what looks like a half-maintained park. There's some stuff, I think, that could be addressed, and maybe some of that could be used for that, just some landscaping, not eliminating the entire 23,000, maybe just addressing some improvements to Welcome Park that would at least make it more welcoming for Hot Springs.
They have done quite a bit of work there with the prisoners doing the rock and all that, so it looks better. Cut down a lot of trees, but I think signage in that area is one thing that still needs to be done, and it is the plan I agree with.
Well, the one bush is growing over there. There's parts in every tanning wall that are still good, it looks like, too, which could be restained and, I mean, maybe it's just maintenance and that's all we need to address.
I think the plan wasn't completed really for that, so I'm not sure what all of this can be done.
Well, I'm just going from the perspective too, it's like parks represent our city, they represent our tax dollars at work, and I think they're important, and I would say we do have some money for budget for irrigation and other stuff. I'm just trying to see if maybe we can spend a little of that to do something to Welcome Park, even if it's not building a brand new park.
Would you say $3,000 if we left $3,000 or $20,000?
I think that would be reasonable for doing this.
We have to cut it through somewhere else.
What's that?
We have to take it from somewhere else.
Bob?
I guess the question I've got, and I'm not diminishing the importance of the park plan because Lord knows it took long enough to gradually get one, but is the council's view on the park plan that it is mandatory spending or is it spending as you have the money to finance? As it looks right now, with being $80,000 in deficit, you've got to look at everything as far as cuts. I mean, if by some chance you can come up with more cuts, you can always look at adding some things back.
Well, that brings me to another question too, is if, and this is just me being naive to budget, but when you project a budget, like say previous years, if we look at having a deficit, does it always ends up being a deficit for that year?
It depends on how we projected revenue.
Because we have cash flow and there's things that change, obviously, like you said, this isn't happening. But like 2016, do we end up in the black year or end up in 2016?
Every fund is different. I can show you the end-of-year reports, although I don't think that we have the time to get into them in depth in this meeting, but some funds made money and some funds lost money. And what you're saying is similar to the reason why you'd have cash applied. That's your ability to use the extra cash that you put in at the end of one year and another year's budget for one-time expenses. But the goal, at least with the council members that I visited with this week, is to get that number down to zero.
Haven't the last, at least the last two or three budgets been balanced?
We do appropriations twice a year to make sure that they are.
So the last several years, we have never gone into, at the end of the budgetary, projecting the deficit?
Not the last two.
I don't believe you do that. That's not balancing your budget.
It's still considered a balanced budget to use cash applied. We are saving money for a big 2020 road construction project, and we are not going to make the revenue in that year to pay for all the things we plan on doing. So cash applied is appropriate in certain circumstances. You determine if it's appropriate in this one.
It's usually for, I checked the legislative audit this past week about that, and it's not, it's not for your operating budget. That's not what cash applied is for. Quote, "You're in trouble if you're doing, using cash applied for your operating budget." It's for one item, a big ticket thing.
And we did identify that the cash applied would be the street sweeper, partial police vehicle, and a portion of that $80,000, $90,000 that's being projected for expenses. So they are not our typical salaries and wages and insurance and those kind of things. They are for one-time capital improvements, but we can also cut those and get that number down to zero, so.
I just, I'm not comfortable doing a budget with, you balance it with your savings account. Bob has a good analogy for that. I wish he would tell everybody that idea.
Keep that in mind. I just have to respond to Mari's question about how individually each of us are viewing the parks plan. For me, it's the same as the housing study that was done. I worry that when the council accepts it, there's a sense that, okay, we've accepted it, now it's become mandatory that we do something off of the plan or off of the housing study every year. I view it as those are suggestions if funding allows that to happen, but it doesn't mean, I don't interpret it to mean we have to pick something off of that plan every year and do it. If the budget allows, then I think we ought to. So that's, when I look at the retaining wall, because I've been approached by several people who have said they're uncomfortable with how that amount was arrived at, was there any engineering expertise involved in that amount? So for me, if that can't be answered, then it's got to go.
Well, and I totally understand that. That I'm not defending the retaining wall by any means, because I don't know enough about that either. And I guess I'm just saying it would be nice to do something to Welcome Park if we could. And that is a different understanding than what I had, so I'm glad to have that understanding. I thought the parks plan meant we did budget something for the parks plan.
I think we all kind of looked at it like that in the hope that everybody still does, because we can't be under the gun to do everything that's on these plans.
Sure, yeah.
Can I insert something about the Welcome Park? So in the discussion of what was going to, supposed to be happening down there was the retaining wall to help secure that hillside. It's the main purpose of the retaining wall. And the gazebo has been supposed to be refabricated to put in there. And then the Evans Plunge book is supposed to be reconstructed and, you know, made smaller and put in there, you know? But if, if by getting the gazebo finally done, because they're supposed to have been working on it for a couple of years, my understanding of the gazebo is that it's trashed, that it would cost a lot, we'd practically have to rebuild it. I was going to say those things would beautify it, you know?
I did ask Billy this question. And he said that the retaining wall is not, I mean, there is no structural issues with it, so it's not something we have to do.
The hillside is not imminent.
No, he said it was hard.
Not only that, that --
It doesn't look like it.
It isn't altogether thought out either because part of that hillside is county, and it should be done with the county, hand in hand, the city and county working on that.
Since we're talking budget, and it sounds like the retaining and bouldering wall needs a lot more discussion in parks.
And Bob answered. I wanted to ask him to explain it. He explained it. He explained it.
You want the spot bump?
We're under the gun. What I had shared was that anybody that's worked for the federal government is always frustrated by how they spend their money. They have pots. And you have money in this pot, you have money in this pot, you have money in this pot, and you can't move the money around. It all comes from one place, it comes from the taxpayers. So when we're looking at all this money that we're looking to spend, it all comes from one place, all comes from all of us. And then the city divides it up, they divide it up into these pots and these pots. What helps me make sense of it is you have a vacation pot and you have a mortgage pot. And you're a little short in the mortgage pot, but you're flesh in the vacation pot. So you go down to your banker and you say, you know what? We're heading off for vacation in two weeks. We don't have enough money in the mortgage pot, so we're not going to be able to make that payment. I'd like to discuss that with you when we come back. Well, it all, it all comes from one place, regardless of how we view it, and what do we do to maximize that money that's there? We can try to rationalize it away however we want, but there's only one source of revenue. And whether we move it from savings to somewhere else, and as Misty has said, we found out with the Department of Transportation, we've got some, some big expenditures coming. They want us to replace two bridges, not just one bridge. So everything that we can do to make sure that we have more over here to move around for actual city infrastructure, I think is important for us to do.
I'd agree. Is there, was there ever a study on that road? Is it actually urgent? Because it doesn't look like it.
That's what Bob was saying, the engineer involved, it has not taken.
So you haven't done that, actually, determined that if this isn't done, that road is going to accumulate or something?
Oh, you mean by the.
Yeah, by the retaining wall.
It's been looked at and, you know, from my engineering experience and background, it's not imminent. But it's something that needs to be watched and monitored to ensure that we don't have any increased erosion and so forth.
So do I have a consensus to remove the twenty-three thousand?
Yeah.
I really, I suggest, it's like you said, you know, we could take twenty thousand off, but leave three, so that they can do some kind of advertisement or whatever in that space, because it's pretty empty right now.
I don't know, I'd be invited like fifteen hundred bucks just to do some landscaping or something for it, but I don't know.
Whichever, it doesn't matter, I think though it does do something.
The sidewalk, that's probably not going to get addressed now, but that sidewalk isn't proper there, it's narrow, I don't know, maybe it's something for there. And I'd be happy to, to talk to Keep Hot Springs Beautiful, leaving the pods, maybe they would be interested in adding this too.
That's a good, good thought. And again, the other thing that, you know, again, there's the opportunity for various grants, and once we get, we don't have the staff now to explore those and write those, so that can be a possibility to add those specific items back.
Besides maintenance, like with Bart, do we have any, is there a department that does, or is it always just hired out, like you're doing specific landscaping or something?
No, our streets guys do a lot of it.
They do, yeah, okay.
So I'm clear what I'm doing with this number? I wouldn't leave fifteen hundred in improvements of the building, because that's capital improvement line, and I could put it somewhere else where you saw fit, or just take it out completely. I wouldn't leave fifteen hundred down there. Put it in professional services or somewhere else?
Is that agreed with the table? What do you want to do, fifteen hundred or not? We all need to have a opinion here.
I think fifteen hundred would be okay. I mean, I don't know how much that would do for landscaping, but.
I'd do so. We still have to take it from somewhere, we start putting stuff back.
Put that in sewer and walk, street and walk repairs for landscaping in the parks? So I add that fifteen hundred to this three thousand, I make that forty-five hundred?
You've got to show progress one way or another, you've got to show some kind of progress.
Well, you have to have it built in the budget to spend it, so. So I'm changing this three thousand to forty-five hundred, and I'm taking the twenty-three thousand out. We have two other highlighted ones in this.
Could you maybe list them somewhere and let us look at it like that, Misty?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
Like you had, it showed each one somewhere on, in your, on your screens. You had each item that we were discussing, you didn't have. Can you take all of these items we're discussing and put them together?
No, that would take quite a bit of time, I know, because we're about the spreadsheets we already have.
It'd be different on different screens, so.
And you can read seventy Excel sheets once it's all.
Yes, and there's formulas built into these, so. If we just do one department at a time, that would be great.
So another, just a silly question, or maybe you address this too. Our goal at the end of this isn't to have like a balanced budget, that we don't have any deficit at all, is it?
I think it is, yes.
Oh, it's got to be completely on zero.
That's what we want, to have us a balanced budget.
And we don't have to.
So we take that out.
We can be like the federal government and spend more than we may.
Well, that's kind of the way cities operate, because that's the way the government operates, but, okay, all right.
Not the time I've been here.
So taking that out, we're down to fifty-nine, seven ninety-six, but we can stay in parks and then bounce around to the other ones that we've identified. Any differences to the building repairs? Anybody want to make any changes to that or leave that? Reconstruction.
We're talking about reconstructing the shed. We've got one of the folks that's on the Parks Committee.
We'll talk about it Monday, I guess.
Yeah, Bart wants to build the new shed, is the words I got from Delvee. That this is a project that's important to our park.
To re-sign it or to rebuild it?
To reconstruct the shed at Butler with this.
I think where I don't want to end up is that we put so many of these little things in, that we're going to get to the end and have to not do a roof or something that needs to be done. That's what I'm concerned about.
I agree.
You know, if we go through the line and we just keep putting things back in, then we're going to have a huge amount, and we're going to have to take a roof away from somebody, or golf carts or something.
You, you, the mayor with that building, that houses the recreational supplies.
So it's the old.
And I don't know which one it is, and I just wondered if you could verify, you know, we've got, if we house some valuable equipment in there, that thirty-five hundred dollars might be a, a good investment to protect that, keep it from the weather.
Do we know that that's why they're doing?
I don't think the whole total is for that either. They've spent in building repairs money every year, so I don't think that thirty-five hundred is the total for that project. I think it's just included in that as a project they wanted to do.
The picnic shelter at Brookside Park and the irrigation for Brookside Park, are those things that we absolutely have to have or things that we would like to have?
I like to finish the shelter, so we finish the project.
And the shelter is a continuation of the restroom?
Yes. Billy felt like that was the one that should be done this year.
And it is something that has to be done this year?
Probably none of it has to be done as far as what has to be or has to.
Okay, well, what has to be done is to come up with a balanced budget.
Right, well, that is true.
Gerald, you mentioned something about some volunteer assistants that.
We've got a couple of service groups that are kicking in.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought the name would be called.
Toward the shelter.
But if we don't build it, they probably won't, right? Or would they fund it?
And is the ten thousand the complete price of the picnic shelter, or, or just the city share?
I'm aware of that, and.
I'm aware that there was supposed to be that much money in the first place.
That's what I thought.
No, where the ten, it was supposed to be seventeen eighty thousand outdoors, but that thing, last I heard, it was twenty-six thousand. The fixtures inside weren't ordered yet, and the shelter is going to be ten thousand more. So that's, that's all I knew about it. I asked about it three times.
So it looks like we've had costs over in the past?
As far as the fixtures not being installed, I'm just confident that I've seen those in the bills, that the council's already approved of purchase of fixtures.
But they haven't been ordered yet, the last time I asked about it, probably.
Well, if we, then, how could we pay for it?
We can't pay for them if we don't.
There was a purchase order for it, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's well done.
It is now, yeah.
So we have some.
I'd like to focus on the budget, which we're trying to figure a plan for next year, but no, we're not solid on the numbers, nobody's gone out and got bids, that's not what we're doing here. We're just trying to plan a budget for projects that we anticipate. We don't have all the answers for how much it's going to cost, maybe seven thousand or seventy-eight hundred or whatever. What we're trying to do here is pass a budget, so that the projects that they want to get done, we have money available for them to do that.
Can you back up just a second? If we have money that we have spent on, this is what I, we're asking. Okay, but does, is there money that's been spent on this project already?
To build the bathroom that's already in place?
What he's saying, that we've had budget items that we paid for.
He's talking about the stuff in the bathroom, and yes, we've already done that.
Is part of the shelter done?
No, the roof was built in a way where they can build out the shelter, but no, the shelter is not enough, that's what their budget is for.
So it's not done, it's not going to get damaged by weather or anything like that?
No, no. I guess, you know, in light of the amount that we've got to cut, I wouldn't recommend that, that's not something that's absolutely necessary and that we remove it. Again, if there's volunteer organizations and the possibility to get a grant, that we can look later on and fund it now.
And would we, would we lose that other funding if we aren't able to match or whatever to do the project, or are they still going to give us their donations?
Yeah, the service groups aren't paying for the whole thing, maybe a third of it.
And when we can get that, we can address it at, I guess I would recommend then that we address it at that.
Do you have a consensus that that's coming out?
Yep.
I can answer your question about irrigation. Yeah, Brookside, that was approved, I don't know, eight years ago by the council. I don't remember getting that. It was approved eight years ago by the city council to be done, and it's been put off and put off and put off.
But it was never appropriated?
Well, it was, it was approved by the council to do it then, it wasn't given a date to do it.
Okay, but was money appropriated?
I don't think.
We started that about five years ago by putting this water line down the alley, and that's what, we got water to the park.
There was always a reason.
All they needed to do was put the irrigation system.
Like what he's saying, and then they needed to get the playground equipment in, and then they needed to get the bathroom in. And now everything's there, and they can finally, you know, make that look like a real park.
So we're down to forty-nine, seven ninety-six. I think the next easy one, if we're done cutting in parks, would be that airport.
Can I ask one more question, Parks, Misty?
Yes.
And I'm going to go to salaries and wages. Two thousand sixteen, there was fifty-eight thousand dollars spent in salaries and wages, but two thousand seventeen, that portion of the budget was cut, four thousand dollars. And this year, we're looking at increasing not only the four thousand that was cut from last year's budget, but adding another one. Does, does that relate back to the cost of living?
DLA prescribes to us that we have to separate these functions. In our maintenance department, we have all of these employees that can work in streets, street cleaning, snow removal, parks, cemetery. So we try, as they put their hours in working on projects, depending on where their time is needed and they're allocated to go, to expense that to the correct function. It's not a perfect science. So we make estimates, and where they spend their time, the maintenance employees that are shared between all of these departments.
And you have gotten much better at doing that, so this is a reflection of increased accuracy in doing that?
No, not necessarily. There may be projects, street projects, that require more people in 2018 than parks have. There may be more parks projects in 2017 than, I don't get to dictate where employees spend their time. So, but when they report that on their time card, then we try to accurately expense that to the correct department. So. Hope that's a good enough answer. It's not an exact science, it's a, it's a guess, best guess. We ready to move on? Does anyone have any objection to removing the seven thousand from the airport budget? No harm will be done?
Ed, you appear again, confirm that, is what we said, hope that he could.
That still has the salaries and wages at full on, and it's just taking out the insurance expense.
So before we move on, removing the seven thousand, my recollection from the conversation we had last week, doesn't mean that we've approved a full-time management.
Right, correct.
That's still a future discussion to have.
It's a future discussion.
It's just an expense we can take out to get us closer to balancing the budget that really will do no harm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I add that, does that say five twenty thirty-eight? Not at this. Before twenty eighteen.
When it comes up for discussion?
Next year?
This is like a good time.
I don't think we talked specifically about when that would happen. We wanted to get through this and then look at it.
It'll come up, yeah.
The next one.
It'll come up before the first of the year.
Think that'll be easy, or not necessarily easy, but maybe not garner too much discussions. Everyone comfortable lowering the legal to forty thousand. Okay, we're down to thirty-two, seven seventy-six. We have two roofs and a police vehicle. Where would we like to start? Mueller Center roof, City Hall roof?
And we also discussed putting on the golf carts this year.
Yeah, but that's two-on-two, so we can move to that when we get done with one-on-one, if that's okay, or if you want to jump around, just let me know.
Well, it's all part of it.
You have the Mueller Center next, I'm not sure.
So at least we are ready lowered, I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
What's the correct amount for the roof? You said it's not fifty thousand, what is it?
It was forty thou, we just saw, let me get this out of here. Forty thousand one ninety-eight, so that would drop that down to?
Nine thousand and so.
Nine thousand nine ninety-nine hundred. Sorry, I was looking historically at what he spent in building repairs. She could probably drop it even.
Is this for City Hall?
Nope. Would you like, we said Mueller Center first, but there are two groups, we're discussing one at City Hall, one at this.
City Hall's leaking really bad, isn't it?
I just think they're both bad. Whether or not they need replaced is not.
I think I'd ask the mayor which one is more viable. I just ask the mayor questions, so maybe you could wait.
I think probably, I would put a higher priority on replacing the Mueller Center roof, that'd been a very complex leaking roof, I think, for a number of years. And if we can get that redesigned and fixed, that would be probably a better investment. The City Hall roof, the major problem occurs when the snow accumulates, and there isn't enough radiation to keep the drain open, and so then as the water melts, it builds up. And that's what causes the majority of the leaking here. I talked with Tracy, there are a couple of ways that we can look at that, and that would be to allow Fintin to keep that rain pipe unfrozen, so that that water won't accumulate and drain out. And Tracy thinks that's possible, leaving thought of putting maybe a heat tape on that, a little bit against that, because of potential fire hazard, because sometimes it's a little short out. So I think, you know, we don't want, want to neglect the City Hall roof. It does, it does leak when that, that circumstance comes about, and I think Misty can testify to that.
Rain's inside.
Rain's inside.
What was the bound on that? Was it fifty also?
Well, at one time, you guys had buckets all over upstairs for the leaks, and that hasn't been that long ago.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's, there's a, there's a problem.
Well, I would think both of them need to be replaced this year. And cut something else, like we've got new cop cars for the last two years, cut that.
That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, roofs are more important than new car, trust me.
And the cop car has thirty-eight thousand and we are thirty-two, seven twenty-six short. I'm just looking for conversation and consensus.
Is it a metal roof? Is that the Mueller Center?
Uh, it is. It's a, it's a convoluted design. There's glass, there's a skylight. And that, because of the differences in the metal and the contracting and expansion that comes with heating and cooling, it's very, very difficult to keep it sealed.
How it's qualitying is...
Yeah, so.
What are the questions I was going to try and ask? They did do some work on that roof down there.
Down to Mueller?
At the Mueller, yeah.
And the week after they did the work, Chris was up back giving me the water spot on the floor.
And it's just the main part, the center is the worst?
It's, uh, this particular one was just to the left as you enter in, about halfway between that and the chamber desk. So it's...
They had hail damage with that once.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been a problem.
Did we ever collect on any of that?
Pardon?
Did we ever collect on any of that?
I don't know.
You know, Misty?
Was it during my time here?
I think so. It was when that's couple of these...
They, in the last hailstorm we had last year that included Evan's plunge damage and the water fill station, Mueller Center, did not have it.
But that really doesn't affect it.
Right.
Doesn't it do more damage the more it leaks? I mean, doesn't it go down into the walls and...
Typically, where it has been leaking has been over that open area in the center as you walk in, that center court area is where it's, it's been leaking. But, you know, we don't know, but, you know, if there's leaks there going into the walls, there's not been, so far as my knowledge, any evidence of that.
Are they going to redesign the whole roof on that?
We'd have, and I'm not familiar enough to know what the ultimate solution would be, but that's why we'd have a company like Weathercraft come in and guarantee it. And we'd get a guarantee with the roof.
I did not misunderstand you last week when we were discussing roofs. There is no insurance money that you foresee it coming into this.
No, not for you to...
So these, these would be all ones for the city. But, when we keep roof, I'm thinking, is I gotta be, as Harley said, you know, the more you leak, the more underlying damage you're going.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So leave the roofs in there and go the police car.
What was the quote on it, Finting?
Forty thousand one ninety-eight in the quote was from Weathercraft.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And if you wanted to see it, Chris has it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving to...
What are the big ticket items we have left? The two roofs, the police car, is that it?
We talked about them.
Yeah, we decreased the other ones. And here's where we're left. We've got this much more to shave off to not, you, don't look at this number anymore. I'm just not updating it. I'm just doing it here. But we've got forty-eight, five twenty, that we can subtract from this amount. So we're down to thirty-two, seven twenty-six.
And we didn't reach a consensus on the golf cart?
No, but that's two-on-two. It's not general. So we will go to that one. I'm not skipping over it. It just wouldn't impact this number. Okay.
And my comments on the roof, I mean, I'm not negating the need for a roof here. I'm saying if there is one that need, that would be more priority, I think would be the Mueller Center as opposed to this. But both are, are important, so.
Why not get rid of the police car and do roofs?
Your discussion.
Well, you got a wood floor upstairs and if it keeps getting wet, it's going to bug it and it's going to ruin your system. I mean, that, don't take no insight and figure that out.
If it was your house and you needed a new roof, you'd probably get that fixed and keep an old car.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Was there an opinion from somebody like Weathercraft? Do they do, I mean, could they look at that and say, oh, we could do a repair instead of replacing this whole thing?
They did look at it and they cannot repair it.
Yeah, it's, it needs, again, it needs a new membrane. It's, it's way old, so.
It's just a patch, no matter what kind of...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
About as a question back here.
And before we, before we jump into discussing about the police vehicle, I just had a, the cover sheet that Misty provided, item twenty and twenty-one, the three-quarter ton truck for the water department, the half-ton truck for the wastewater, I mean, are they out of vehicles that they, that they need to have those? I mean, could, could one be tasked from?
Neither one of those would affect the general fund. Both of those funds have cash going back in their savings at the end of the year. So they have more revenue than expenditures. And if we remove those, which is a conversation we can have, it's still not going to change.
Okay, you're right.
Good question. We've talked about that.
And the excess vehicles will be used at the airport as provided. And with the four-wheel drive pickup that you can use there.
All right. So what's the consensus on this police vehicle? I think they need a, what do you propose?
I think we have some issues with their current vehicles that we're going to have to replace. And I know people think we've got two new ones, but they're police cars. It's not just what we're driving back from, but we're going to open the store, we'll respond to life and death calls in some cases. We start cheaping out on that. If someone's going to make, you know, it could be, we're working on repairing to keep two old vehicles running, or they break down, we'll respond to a call. Or we cheat someone from having backup.
So, but the council's historically not, uh, the most purchases of new cars every year, correct?
I, I don't know. I've been here for two years.
And before this happened, when was the last time we saw one? Seven, eight, nine, ten. I have their ten vehicles in their fleet pulled up right there. We've got the years and Bill can maybe share some more information on the condition. The one that's highlighted is already at the city shop. Not, it's not usable anymore. It needs to be surplus. It's out of service, has been since two thousand sixteen. We have one that's not assigned right now, but I also believe this one's not in good condition. That's why it's not assigned.
It's not assigned, but horrible.
So which would be the one you'd be replacing with this new vehicle, since this other bad one's not in service?
One of the, um, two thousand eight Dodge Durangos.
Okay.
Do we have, is there a mileage in the column or is that...
Uh, no, because that changes all the time. So what, why we do this is to keep track of the vehicles. The police department has a mileage list that I could probably go find.
Did you just say that one of the vehicles that would be replaced would be one of the two thousand eight Durangos?
Yes.
And not...
Well, the old Charger's not used right now, so I don't count that. Um, one of those Durangos would probably drop down to be a spare of the reserve vehicle. And then the middle would go into the rotation.
What about the O-three Durango?
That one's out of commission already.
So, uh, this is from May.
Oh, I didn't know that.
This is a moving number, but this is from May.
It's better than the two Durangos right now.
I'll let him finish and then I'll tell you. Everybody's...
We care for them as much as we possibly can, but unfortunately, and winter's very tough on these. You get called out in the middle of the night to a clock in the morning. It's technically easy to jump in and go. It's, it's, the police cars are unfortunately ridden hard sometimes.
One of the Dodge Durangos has ninety-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five miles and the other Dodge Durango has eighty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-four. Again, that's from May, so it's a couple months behind.
And the general consensus is, at minimum, you double the mileage on a police car. And in some cases, you're basically tripling because they're left running sometimes. They're ridden hard.
Are you going to fix the Charger? Isn't that, isn't that the one that was run without water?
Yeah, that's one of the problems I believe there is with it. And I am not a car guy, so I'm not a hundred percent on everything. I don't know if Mike has plans to fix it. I don't hope it's even, if it's a gas prohibitive.
Oops, I hate to do that, sorry.
Can I say, I think we've been real supportive with the police department. Rivals, guns, tasers, vests. I mean, we give you all everything we can. And I mean, asking you to make do with an old car for one year might be something...
And, and we'll make do with it because the public may do with it. You're not, we're not giving it to us. We're giving it to the public, though. That's the difference. And I'm not saying you haven't been generous with the stuff that we should have had a long time ago. What I'm saying is, you're not going to cheat us. We'll drive old cars. We'll make do with what you give us. The question is, if we can properly do our job, are we doing the right thing for the public?
I guess, and I'm, I'm understanding, it's, it's bringing you such a little town. You know, it seems like it ought to be fairly easy to patrol it. It's not very big.
And, and it is when we have the proper, to do so, we're very much so. But if you're, if you're, if, you know, say for example, if someone's husband is having a heart attack and we can't get there, our car breaks...
They're in trouble if they call you.
Well, we respond, though. We're the first responders. We always, yeah, we're responding to those calls because someone is in trouble. And if it takes us, think of the difference between someone having a heart attack and us getting there in one minute versus five minutes.
Don't they call that angry?
They do. They do, absolutely. But again, if you're talking CPR, you're talking life and death, one minute versus five minutes or ten minutes, which is historically the ambulance response time. We're talking a lot of time. You're getting beat up by someone, you're, there's a man with a gun. Those calls, a minute can make a difference.
We also got definitely sheriffs in town. And a lot of times, you see cop cars sitting in the police department like Mike's and yours and stuff that been there for a couple days. So can they be used by somebody else?
All those cars should be used by someone else. But if they break down in the middle of a call...
Who does the...
Anyone who's actually at the police department could, went down for repairs.
Who does the repairs?
Um, mine, the city shop does most of them for us. Mine's under warranty, so it was taken to shatter Dodge.
And do we have an opinion from, I mean, if there was somebody that did it regularly, they'd give the opinion that this car is not going to...
That's how the Durango got on here, was the mechanic. I, I can't help this one anymore.
Okay.
And he, he did a brilliant job on that red Durango. I mean, he did it all for several years.
Okay.
Do you know approximately what it would take to fix the Charger?
I, I don't. Again, I'm not a car guy.
Sorry, and you put it on stop.
No, you're fine. I just, I don't know.
I guess that's... They ran it really hot, so it might take a whole...
Bunch of repairs.
Yeah, it's good. He said, what do you budget for repairs on these vehicles?
Older be cheaper than a car.
We have vehicle repairs, six thousand.
How much have they used so far this year?
Well, this was printed in the middle of July, but thirty-nine hundred or forty-three percent of their budget had been used in seventeen.
If you're to increase the vehicle repair budget a little, it'd be a new car, wouldn't it?
I would recommend that you do.
Yeah.
If you take the new car out.
That's a good idea.
And we, we do have thirty-eight, thirty-three, fifty-three hundred dollars that we could still, yeah.
Could put in the vehicle repairs. It's a good idea.
Could you guys have an opinion on that, the Charger? What, if it's feasible?
Yeah, I don't know.
Or to keep one of the other ones.
Yeah, because there are, that Charger's currently not being used by anyone. So everyone has a car.
Even if you had to put a new motor in that Charger, you're probably looking at three thousand dollars.
In a vehicle, we would probably, if we approved a...
Well, the Charger isn't a bad car. It just, and it might not need a whole motor, but it got pretty hot. So probably do need ten, please.
So are we leaning towards removing the thirty-eight, but adding some back into vehicle repairs to help them maintain their existing fleet for twenty-eighteen?
Maybe yes, for a show of hands. Not voting, but around the council, what, what you think.
I have a question for Catherine. I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you're uncomfortable. Last year, Chief Coast made a, a case of having pickups relevant cars. When they're no longer usable for the police department, they can go to the city shops. And now a car is being requested again. Is something a shame? Help me understand that.
From my understanding, again, I don't want to speak for Mike. My understanding is that, I think we have realized that cars are probably a little bit more practical in town. And Officer Schaefer absolutely loves a pickup. It's better for, you know, if he's around, we can haul animals or bikes or whatever other recovered property. But overall, I think, from my conversation with Mike, we figured the car is a little bit more practical. I think it's a little bit, and don't quote me on this, I think it's a little bit cheaper as well. So, um, that pickup, I'm sure when it's done with being used as a police vehicle, can go to the city shop. And it's still something that we would take. It's not that we would turn down a pickup. I just think for general patrol in town, those cars are a little bit more practical.
I did speak, but you know, that's basically...
Okay, yeah, try to get my, this point.
No, you're right. And we did get the pickup kind of late, because I think there was some ordering stuff that went on. So it should have been the year before.
Show of hands, who's in agreement to remove the patrol vehicle and add additional funds to vehicle repairs for this current budget? Comfortable if you're making that change?
No, I don't.
How much would you like to add to vehicle repairs?
Enough for a new engine.
So five thousand?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Yeah. That'll help them out if they get stuff.
Okay, I'm going to make these changes and then I'll go back.
Does vehicle repairs, does anybody tell things like tire replacement and stuff too?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to take you back to your total in the one-on-one fund. Oh, sorry, what's this, Lexia? Okay, so yeah, we changed that. Cash applied and removed it. We have two hundred and twenty-four dollars left over in the general fund.
Good rose.
Yeah, so we're ready to move on to the golf course and the plunge? Requested to revisit Evan's plunge. Again, the way the golf course and the plunge affect the budget, since neither of those enterprise funds generate enough revenue to sustain their operations on a yearly basis, we subsidize them from our two-on-two or additional sales tax fund, which currently has a remaining, projected revenue exceeds projected expenses in this fund, with the projections we had talked about earlier, with sixty-two, forty-one in excess. Any cuts that we can make to these two will increase that amount and therefore increase the amount maybe we can spend on streets or something else. So, um, one of the projects identified that you asked me to question and we came back to was the mural lighting and landscaping below the art. That was not a high priority for the department head.
I'd say it's a no.
Everyone?
Done.
Done. Okay, so these require a little more math. That's for math. Let me, to... And before I read math that, we need to talk about the golf carts because that will also impact the change in the two-on-two fund. So we're done with Evan's plunge and their total then is seven eighty-three ninety. Look at the changes. And it's in the pro shop that we had highlighted, the carts. This, oops. Depending on, again, we're not entering into any agreement. We're just budgeting money. We had comments both ways on how to release the own.
Shouldn't you change the amount to the twenty-nine-nine bounty?
If that's what we're going to do.
I mean, isn't it, well, that's not accurate.
Fifteen-two or twenty-nine-nine? I'm going to change it one way or the other, but let's talk about that. I already gave my summary.
I guess the first thing that you as a council need to decide is whether we're willing to authorize money for new carts at the golf cart, at the golf course. You know, they're what, seventeen years old, something like that, fifteen, sixteen years old. We have, you know, I think it's, it's time to get, to get new carts just from a safety standpoint.
They do generate about sixty to seventy thousand dollars in revenues, cart rentals.
So they pay for themselves because they're rented out or used by members that pay a yearly fee to use those carts. So I think, I guess personally, I, I think it's, it's incumbent on us to get those carts now, one way or the other. Any comments or...
I, I know the five thousand dollars up there on the top cart repairs, if we did get these new ones, we would probably be able to reduce that down at least to like maybe a thousand, I don't know. What else you have, the new repairs on?
Well, they've got their other things that they.
I think that deals with changing, one of the big things they'll still have to do is change oil and.
But would they?
Maintenance.
Would it be a thousand?
But I don't think it would be five thousand.
Could we take four thousand off of that?
Yes.
Don't they have other vehicles out there?
Yeah, they have to be, because.
This is just under the pro shop, that's all.
Like the carts generally don't hold up with that kind of.
One thing that I might add, I think for process about this before, but it was just to buy them all before, so this looks a whole lot better than just, you know, because when would we ever have the money to go out and purchase those, you know? I think we have to look at one of these options whenever the council decides.
So really, the difference, if we do increase this to twenty-nine-nine and still allow the discussion around, you know, if lease or lease own is the right thing, the difference can come, it sounds like, from the vehicle repair budget, knowing that they'll have an entirely new fleet and.
I don't see why they'd need five thousand.
Is that vehicle repair budget just for golf carts or for all their equipment?
It's, it's not the, it's just the pro shop, which is cart repair.
Yeah, true.
What drawbacks does, in a business sense, would a lease have if opposed to buying? Other than, you're, you're gonna buy them twice.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you can, you've paid all that, you've invested that fifteen thousand per year. If you want to buy them, there's, you know, you're gonna have to pay.
Buy them again.
Buy them again, like you said, or you can look at, you know, redoing the lease agreement if the carts are in good shape. I doubt whether they would probably want to do that. They would probably want to provide us with new carts and take those back. And I don't know what kind of residual value, we'd have to look at the contract to see what kind of residual value those would, if they took it back, if it's zero or some, some number.
So then, on the equipment repairs, there's sixteen hundred and in fifteen, you only use two hundred and thirty dollars. So what is the difference between that one and your vehicle repairs?
It'd be like ice machine or any other equipment that was in the pro shop. And repairs are really hard to budget for and spend fifty percent by the middle of the year, because you can't anticipate a breakdown or the expense.
Two thousand fifteen, they only use two hundred and thirty.
Right.
I was gonna say, you could maybe even take a little bit from that. You know, down to six hundred, take a thousand off of that.
I wouldn't take a thousand off of that, if that's what they're asking.
You'd have to.
Because they're only using, they're not even using that much, eight hundred and eighty-three.
We need to decide what to do with the golf carts.
I think we can decrease a little bit of it anyway.
And remembering too, as we look at these golf carts, they are an income generating revenue for the pro shop, a big part of it.
So if we bump this up to twenty-nine-nine, we'd need to shave it sixty-three-twenty off of somewhere else. And there's not enough between those two to get that much. So that would increase our subsidy, but we just decreased it in the plunge. And I'm just throwing those thoughts out there. I'm not making any changes. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, the lease to own, bumping it up to twenty-nine, at the end of the lease period then, there's no violation, they're controlling them.
I confirm that today. And both of these options are us giving them our fifty-five, two thousand one working golf carts.
Yeah.
They get a forty and a.
And this is the one Kathy prefers, am I correct?
Kathy preferred the lease to own. One of the various advisory members that responded to Jason's request preferred the lease. And I think George may have preferred the lease too, but you're here, so I'll make sure yourself.
It's after five years, they would own them?
On the lease to own, for the twenty-nine-nine.
Well, our carts lasted a long time, so I can see why she likes that.
And then it's all revenue after that. So are we bumping that to twenty-nine-nine? And then looking back again at equipment repairs? And what was the other one you wanted me to look at, or vehicle repairs and equipment repairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know the difference total cost between the lease and buying? I mean, it's less. In the end?
We don't, when we leased, we wouldn't own them. So we'd have a fifteen thousand, two hundred dollar payment every year for five years. And then at the end of five years, we wouldn't have any golf carts.
Oh, then it's just.
And it could go up, the next lease could go up.
Just based on normal usage and current prices, I guess, probably after five years, a cart would be worth about twenty-five hundred dollars. And that, you know, that could vary, a thousand dollars either way, but just based on, you know, prices when we looked at, so, you know, you could, even two thousand times forty, you could see what kind of a value that we have, have lot.
To whether you want them again or to do in the lease.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, Misty?
Yeah.
Who does the maintenance on those? Do the city pay for all the maintenance if those need done five years?
The leased ones are fully covered. The only thing that wouldn't be is the, both of them. All the warranty items are covered except for abuse, neglect, flat tires or damage. And then every two hundred hours, they should be serviced, and that's our responsibility. With this, and we're not necessarily locked in going with this company, but that's the one we're kind of looking at for.
So we still have to service them and maintain them, correct?
Yeah, normal.
They broke down, though, they'd be replaced. All right, so that up to twenty-nine-nine.
So they're taking all the old golf carts. What have they given you for those golf carts? Is that just to downpay them or?
Yeah, it's part of what makes this lease the price that it is. So again, we haven't, we haven't agreed to anything with them, we're just kind of estimating, but that, we don't want them. We don't even really want the, having to sell them. If they're interested in them, they can lower our lease price per year in order to take them. That's what they're looking to do. All right, so vehicle repairs. What number should I put there? If we're leasing new carts.
Ten thousand.
Everyone okay with a thousand there?
I think it's just four.
What is it now?
Five thousand, but that's, if you look historically, that was.
I think we should, we could probably take.
Repairing the ones we have.
What's after repairs?
Tires and.
Clutch, that replace the clutch is not a bunch of them, my first year there.
But tires should still be our responsibility, right?
Well, these would be new, so it wouldn't be next year, unless there was abuse or neglect.
They ordered a bunch of tires last year, I know.
Leaving these other numbers, or did somebody else agree with Georgia?
I don't agree with that on equipment repairs.
Take off at least five hundred or.
Because she's used almost half of it. She used half of it already this year.
You can't really, I mean, breakdowns, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a pretty low number.
Ice machine goes on, you could spend four or five hundred bucks for repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
Easily.
I just wish they put a muffler on that ice machine.
So two oh one, three seventy-four.
What about minor tools she's got, she's only used twenty-eight percent of her budget in that. She went down a little bit, but.
Why was there such an increase on the two thousand seventeen, like, if she had only spent three hundred and forty-three in two thousand sixteen? I mean, that's like a, almost a four-time increase.
Yeah, we were doing the budget this time of year, so it was before the end of the year. I'm not sure what specifically she had on her request.
I'm just wondering if she couldn't go down to five hundred dollars on that.
I think, what about, what do you think about that, George, somebody?
Five hundred dollars on what?
She's not spending as much historically, two seventy-seven, three forty-three.
She spent four oh four year to date. So maybe six hundred?
Sounds okay to me.
Yeah.
Six hundred, that brings her down another five hundred. Any other places you want to look to cut here?
The only other one I saw was wine, on sale wine, she's, you know, two hundred and fourteen dollars so far this year and she budgeted eight hundred. How much more do we need?
Yeah, that's something she resales, so.
Resales.
That's not really.
It's a in-out.
Okay, so Evan's plunge went down to seven eight three.
When she doesn't sell it, does she just keep it for next year?
If it's not open, she could. For the group.
Keep it?
Going.
We would do the next council meeting.
Sounds good. Oh, that's so small.
So this isn't a budget suggestion, but for Evan's plunge, I can only speak for the people I know, but a lot of people have been turned off by, because the city bought it, the price has gone up for subscriptions, so a lot of people have dropped their subscriptions. I don't know if this is, you know, something that's possible, if we could possibly lower the price for residents, then residents would start buying them again. True, we get less per resident, but we get more people probably showing up to that.
What do you mean by subscription and membership?
Yeah, membership, that's what I meant. I can only speak for the people I know personally, that's the reason that they said, because the price has gone up so much.
You know, Sam, I encourage you to, you know, attend the next plunge meeting. That's something that we could certainly, you know, certainly address.
All right.
I think that's.
Sam, just so you know, we copped on that route. And it, you know, it's kind of two different ways of looking at it. People complain for all kinds of reasons, but if they want to use it, it's really fairly reasonable, especially the membership fee. But yeah, and there's different ways of looking at it.
I think here's not a good place to get into that, but I have heard the same thing. People say it's a city pool, the city pays for it, the city doesn't get a discount, but you give them a discount, then the people in the county get mad, you know, so.
But the county doesn't pay.
Yeah, comparatively, exactly.
I know, I know, but they say they support it. That's why they went back, because they did have a discount for hot screens residents, and then they got rid of it, and I agree with you.
I'll show up at the next meeting.
Yeah, to do, that's your committee. Skylar will look into that.
Sam, not to pick on you, but if you reduce the price of ice cream, would you get more business?
It's possible.
Sixty.
Yeah, that's the moment we have to do for three months. Yeah, but, but you see the point, I mean, when you start talking about re-subscriptions, you're not always going to gain what you lost. I get that, but, you know, it's just not good.
So we have to add seventeen thirty to this. You know, that seems one.
Misty?
Yeah.
But remember, Sam, so if I just had a question, what is OASI again?
Old Age Survivor Insurance Benefits.
Okay.
Um, I am trying to.
Folks are sweating so bad here, too.
Mrs. Cuddy?
And then the plunge's loss is going down by the amount we decreased that, which is ten thousand, so.
This is what, that we can have, we should do all this where.
Yeah.
I'm doing the transaction.
I get to lower this number to. It's so hard to dig this up, Sam. So we have two forty-one, six twenty-four, two eighty-one. Six twenty-four, that still gives us forty thousand saved for the 2020 reconstruction and the two subsidies. So now our 2-1-2 fund with those changes, let me make sure that revenue is for those. Seven one, seven seven eighty, seven one, seven seven eighty. The total subsidy is two forty-one, six twenty-four plus the forty, and our transfers five. So seven oh three, two six two seven. That's what we have remaining in our 2-1-2 fund. We still, in this fund, need to discuss the donation requests. In this number, we have twenty thousand. What you do with this, put it back in the bank, put it over here, put it in streets, that's a decision for the council.
Misty, that's basically really, that would just go back into.
The 2-1-2 fund for our big projects, yes.
Yeah, it just goes back into that.
It can, yes.
Right.
To project a.
We can take it out, but it goes back into it.
Cash applied, yep.
Right.
To project more revenue than expenses, it's not necessarily a bad thing if you can do that. So with all that work that we've done, now this is all we have left.
Didn't you have the senior center on there too?
They're in our general fund.
The budgeting business department are in our general fund.
As well as the fire department.
Oh, okay.
Well, personally, all these are good causes, but I think that working on our roads and saving money from the huge expenditures we're gonna have in 2020 is more important than donating to charity. So I'm gonna suggest that we reduce the twenty grand, reduce that down. Maybe not eliminate it entirely, but definitely reduce it. Because don't forget, we gotta save money. And we did repair our roads.
Do you have amounts that you'd like to see to recommend or?
It seems like the Boys and Girls Club could do some fundraising. I don't know if they already do or not, but how about ten thousand instead of fifteen?
I think that's too much.
I'd suggest we bring our total donations down to ten thousand or less.
Or five thousand, ten, whatever. Yeah, I think the problem is that I have with this is I don't think twenty thousand dollars or any amount should be listed in our budget for donations. I think we should receive requests for donations. And then we see what we have, or what we feel like we don't need to put in streets or whatever. But I have a real problem with just somebody knowing or somebody throwing twenty, thirty thousand dollars into our budget, and then we're sitting here, oh my God, we've got to give away thirty thousand or twenty thousand dollars. I, I would rather have the requests be made, but not put an amount. We don't have to put it in here to balance our budget, right? We don't have to have twenty thousand dollars in there to balance.
You don't have to spend any amount you don't want to, no?
No, no. This is like a savings account.
Well, I'll tell you, Perryville's Transit does take people around to spend money at your grocery stores and all over. We do get 2-1-2 funds from it.
And they take people out to the hospital, they can't go out there.
They used to be just like the other, like the fire department and Meals on Wheels, however that do. It was fixed into the budget. It was not in this category where we debate. We might debate a new van or something, but they've always been part of the budget if you go back.
Gerald, you still involved.
Gerald, you still involved with United Way, Hot Springs?
Just as a volunteer.
What, what amounts do these charities get from United Way?
Okay, I haven't seen that paperwork for a few years.
Since we've gone to the combined activity, do we have, do you think that Hot Springs's contributions have gone down?
It depends on, yeah, some of the volunteers that are pushing different activities that are going on. Because the volunteers are the ones that have to go out to the businesses to.
I guess, you know, where I'm coming from with these questions, again, with the money that we're entrusted to, people pay those taxes for us to operate the services that we need to operate and provide as a city government. And there may be people that pay those taxes that don't like the Boys and Girls Club. Maybe Miss South Dakota is not on their most popular list, or Shadco or whatever. But the United Way provides an opportunity for people to give to those organizations. And I know we're not going to solve that here tonight, but if we as a community could see and transfer some of that enthusiasm from getting money from the city to getting money from our citizens for things that we pay and put those needs out there, perhaps, you know, some of that deficit and those needs could be met through the organization that is intended to help provide those, and that would be the United Way. All of those except for Shadco, Shadco.
Shadco's not going to be able to get anything from the United Way.
Yeah, and probably, I don't know if Miss South Dakota, but.
Yeah, I would doubt it.
George, just so you know, United Way for the Boys and Girls Club last year was eleven thousand five hundred and thirty. Yes. And you get.
And. So it's, you know, just, I mean, that's not gonna, we're not going to be able to solve that overnight, but I think that's the paradigm that we need to work toward, and organizations need to work toward also.
What exactly does Shadco do for the city?
We're the avenue, we're a volunteer board, there's twelve board members. We've got a full-time executive director. Our mission is to attract businesses to Fall River County and to help the businesses that are already established in Fall River County, to help them in any way that we can as far as expansion, keep them in business. We've had, as we talked about last Wednesday night, we've had a lot of involvement with housing, workforce housing, trying to get that initiative going to where we can get some affordable housing put up, knowing that that's going to be an issue, or it already is an issue with the call center at the VA with a lot of those employees trying to find a place to live. So it's full-time economic development is what it gets into, attracting new businesses, keeping the businesses that are here, and trying to help grow the economy.
Are there reports that show what Shadco is doing?
You know, that's the tough thing about economic development is unless you, unless you have a new company move in, that's easy to say that's a success. We were there to get them to move in. It's not an overnight process. Kind of like your budget for the Evans Plunge and everything. You can't get to everything cleaned up and fixed the way you want it in one year. So it's one of those of, yeah, at some point, there's got to be some specific benefits that you can see that are being accomplished to justify all the time that everybody's investing in it, not only the board, but the county and whoever else makes memberships on it. But it does take time. I know when Andrea was here last week, she mentioned that of the eight or nine businesses that opened up on Main Street, every one of those had some contact with her. Now that, we're not trying to say that was the reason that they opened, but there was some assistance there as far as maybe putting them in, with the right person helped do a business plan, some of those things. So it's just a little bit of everything.
What's your full-time director make a year?
A salary that is appropriate in comparison to the other communities around the state.
That don't answer my question, what is it?
Anybody that is a member of Shadco's entitled to.
You're asking money from the tax burden, but we can't know what you asked.
It was in the package that was provided to the city council.
We need to decide how much.
Yeah, we need to make it through that.
How much, if any, we need to give away, not to get it all.
At the most, or is the council looking at thirty-four thousand, twenty thousand, or fourteen thousand at this point?
That's what we need to decide.
Yeah, that's.
That's what we need to decide.
And that's what we're trying to.
I agree with Sam.
I would argue that these are an investment as well, so I don't know about, I mean, I think that's something where you're going to be, you know, you look a bit towards the future. Every one of these is an investment in our community as well. And from what I understood, if you are trying to address economic development, I was at a couple of board meetings, and I know that some of those businesses through your presence contacted you in regards to moving to Hot Springs. So having something like that that is available, and the more available that it is, in conjunction with our Chamber of Commerce and what the city does as well, is a revenue generator. I think all of these, for people coming to Hot Springs, because Hot Springs is becoming that with the Front Range people, young families are moving here, and all of these things, well, elderly, we've got a lot of retirement people that can benefit, they're retired, and also for younger families, Boys and Girls Club, for new businesses, Shadco. I would, I don't know, it would be, if it was more than twenty thousand, if it was something that I really felt was going to have a huge impact on the city budget, on whether or not we were going to be able to operate fiscally throughout the year, then I would consider lowering it. But I don't think that seems like that much for something that, like that, that we can benefit from. I mean, we'd have to decide, obviously, thirty thousand, we can't reach, we can't raise it at this point. I don't think we're going to have enough support to do that, but to lower it, I don't think it makes sense either. That's just my opinion.
We only have twenty thousand set aside in the first place.
For all of them.
For all of them.
To answer your question, right, January through December twenty sixteen, total wages, it doesn't break out.
We could take the twenty thousand and put that towards streets. I think sixty thousand for street repair and gear is a joke. I think we need more in that fund.
I agree with you.
We have fourteen five that we could add right now.
I forgot thirty-four five.
Thirty-four five, yes.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry.
My dilemma with this is, for me, Boys and Girls Club, Prairie Hills Transit, how a community treats their oldest and their youngest, I think says a lot about us. But at the same time, if I'm going to tell the police department, I can't support a thirty-eight thousand dollar vehicle, how am I going to support? I'm sorry. I mean, any organization that's asking for equivalent amount to thirty thousand as a donation. So that's my struggle, that's my dilemma at this point. But for me, Boys and Girls Club and Prairie Hills Transit are going to bump to the top of what I would like to see contributed. Miss South Dakota, last year we talked about in-kind contribution, and it seems like the rental fee was around thirty-five hundred for the meal or something.
I was hoping it was seven, the other hundred.
So we've already covered Miss South Dakota. If we look at an in-kind, that could easily come off. It doesn't even need to be there for our consideration.
Agreed.
Helpline, when you look at their financials, some of these people have more money than we do.
Maybe they should donate to the city.
Well, and one thing about Prairie Hill Transit, Misty sent us some information that they, tell them, Misty, what they did in Deadwood.
There, I just read an article, and I forwarded the article, I'm not good at recapping, so this is just a recap, if you'd like to see the article, I can forward it to you, but they asked Deadwood for five thousand more. I'm not sure if that's more than what Deadwood agreed to give them, or five thousand in total, but Deadwood agreed to give them twenty-five hundred, and they didn't like that, so they pulled out of Deadwood.
And you look at what they're asking us for, twenty-four thousand, or even if we gave them five thousand to one thousand, whatever, there's a chance they'll pull out.
I hope you looked at the financials they provided as well.
I know they have a lot of money, but they're, you know, we should. I don't know how many people here use, I don't have the numbers on that, but I think it's a lot. There are people that get to work, there are kids that use it. It's viable, Boys and Girls Club, that's our kids.
Well, it's all worthy, but it's like George says, you don't want to be forced to donate to something, and this is taxpayer dollars.
It is, I don't believe in it.
I agree with what Bob said, you know, we cut a cop car, which is needed. Captain said that, but we're arguing about what kind of money we're going to donate to people, and we can't even give our police department adequate cars.
Or put enough in streets to really do something with our streets, sixty thousand dollars.
What is that, fourteen blocks? That's tiny, that's nothing.
Twenty to twenty-six, I thought, is what Tracy said for that amount, but I could be wrong.
It really depends on what you're going to do to them. Chip and seal, you can get a lot more, but it'll be an overlay or an actual repair. Fourteen thousand, I'm going to get you very far. So every little bit is going to help.
Maybe we just need to show of hands, how, establish how many people here, sitting at this table, want to give away less than the twenty thousand. Okay, we've got that.
Did you count? You never count. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. I don't think, I don't think we're doing anything.
I do think we can look around and see.
Well, you don't look.
There was five hands, huh?
It doesn't matter, I'm just trying to say, we can't vote on this.
You're not voting to show of hands.
Looking for a consensus.
There's a real definite point about saying, you could take the twenty thousand allocated for donations, you could take the fourteen thousand, put it in the capital improvement fund to spend on city projects that are going to be direct benefit to the taxpayer. But those things that you can spend on, you're never going to have enough money to fully do the job. You can look at this money, and I'm hearing forced to give. I don't look on it as being forced to give, it's, I guess I'm looking at some of this as being an investment into the quality of life and into the future of Hot Springs that has got more of a, I guess, an intrinsic value as opposed to an implicit value.
But you still have to think about what Bob is saying. I mean, we're taking money away from departments, we're not doing a police car because we don't have the money for it, but we're going to turn right around and because it's a nice thing to do, give away.
And then the other thing.
I think the police would agree, our Boys and Girls Club helps keep them off the street.
I do think that's so.
It's an important investment that we've made, and we don't have school on Fridays. We have a big.
The plunge should be free on Friday weeks for all.
Well, it's not, it's not.
That's been discussed several times in conferences.
But right now, what I'm saying is Fridays is a big issue. Boys and Girls Club do cover that for us. And maybe we should talk to the school, have them go back to five days. But in the meantime, Fridays is a big issue. And I think we need to pay attention to what we're doing for our kids here. As far as Prairie Hills Market, Prairie Hills Gold, like you said, they take care of our kids, our older people. I don't necessarily think we need twenty-four thousand. We did help buy them one vehicle once. As far as being scared to death they're going to pull out, I doubt that's going to happen because they do have an investment here, and.
I'll tell them we.
You go ahead, Kelly, I'd love to have you tell me whatever you want to.
They're looking for a council member to serve on the board. Yeah.
And it's important that we keep these. And as far as Miss South Dakota, scholarship, it does advertise that we are still interested in keeping them here. Two, other than, we contribute to the use of the facility and all that, but the scholarship, that is basically what the scholarship is, and it goes to that person usually, and it advertises for Hot Springs. So when you talk about advertising, this is probably one place you do advertise.
Somebody put out an amount, you know, that's actually.
Seventy-five hundred for Boys and Girls and five thousand for Prairie Hills Transit.
Seventy-five hundred each?
No, five thousand for Prairie Hills Transit.
I'm sorry.
Five thousand for Prairie Hills.
Five thousand, they requested ten, we gave them five last year, I believe. The other fourteen was for a new vehicle.
And our helpline, how do you feel on the helpline?
I'd leave just that.
I'm talking to him back here, just a second.
Okay, I just want to show of hands, how many would go.
Please don't, please don't go, and you're interrupting.
Right, let's.
Can you tell us what you think?
I don't have any numbers on it, I don't, I don't think I'd be a fair.
Do you feel you, they use it?
Again, I have zero numbers, I'm sorry.
She gave us numbers, I think, but I don't know.
I don't know how he would know if he could call two-one-one.
I don't, so I can't give any kind of assessment.
I feel like it's important to keep it at least.
Was this part of the budget, we're coming up with twenty-five thousand last year, was this that big of a struggle then as well?
Oh, yes.
Marty, and last year was much better than two years ago.
Yeah, okay. But we still came up with twenty-five thousand, and, I mean, would it be possible to, did the Boys and Girls Club ask for substantially more, and that's why they got the most?
Nope, that's what they asked for, I think.
What happened was there was that lump of money sitting there, and the council just gave it away? Because they didn't want it well.
That's not too careful.
Some people might say.
Pretty much it is.
No, it's not.
My understanding, being new on the council last year, my understanding was that the twenty-five was coming from a revenue source in the same sense that the other departments are generating revenue. I didn't understand really until this year that whatever donations is there comes out of savings in a sense. There isn't a specific revenue generator for other than tax dollars and those kinds of things. That's why I'm looking at it a little differently this year, in that it does come out of savings, and we have some pretty big expenditures coming up through 2020. And we need to start saving money rather than spending money because we're flush in one place. By the end of 2021, we're not going to be flush.
And I agree with everything that Bob says, as a small business owner, I can attest to that Shadco has helped my business, and I would, my business would not be here. I would not have bought a new building a month ago. I would not have bought six hundred dollars in paint at Ace this month, and I wouldn't have two full-time employees if it wasn't for Shadco. And that's just me. Thank you.
And that's what I was talking about with investment, because we can look at the straight numbers. But at some point, you also have to look at what you're doing to invest in your title. And those are intangible numbers, and like he said, that could have a big impact. I know a lot of people who use Mad Sided, and it's great, otherwise it'd probably go to Rapid Suit. So we keep the income here. So I don't know, we could, obviously, there's a lot of support to increase that number, but there's a lot of goodwill and a lot of investment in our future that I think comes from this, and I need to see it.
Can we just get a show of hands?
Well, I think.
Who goes along with Bob's?
There's a couple other things that I think that, you know, before we do, that obviously, we're not going to be approving this tonight. There will be a vote that comes, that you, as a council, will make. And as a result of that, you will have calls and questions.
We can take the lead.
From parents that maybe are concerned about supporting the Boys and Girls, local business people that have benefited from Shadco, and grants and so forth that we have asked them to provide, now we can't because they don't have the manpower or ability, the elderly. They may have their services cut, I don't know when that will be, or the threat of Miss South Dakota coming. cut, I don't know when that will be, or the threat of this obstacle coming, yet if you fold those, fill those to exactly what they've asked for, you'll have the questions coming from the other side, why, why can't we improve our streets?
We have those questions.
You know, so this is a tough decision, and I just want everybody to realize, we're not making a, a total decision tonight, but we've got to be able to stand up and answer those questions with a very thought-through answer, and I appreciate the interest that's in the room, but I hope that you are here, are seeing the struggle that we've borne through, and the needs of the cities, and understand that. It's not easy, but what will be, will be, and we, you know, I think we're doing it, trying to do our due diligence, and I, I hear the, the comments on, on both sides. I like Marty, and I, I hear a very compelling testimony to me, of an individual that invested a business in this community because of his association with our Economic Development Organization. How many of you knew that?
I did.
Before you came to this meeting tonight?
One. I knew one.
About Mr., you know, and that's, I did not, I did not know that you were contacted.
You're also getting a grant, learning grant, aren't you?
But on the other hand, I think there needs to be a message sent to these organizations to, that fundraising is a part of their mission, and I've talked very frankly with the people on the board, and Andrea, about Shedco, that we need to get our business community behind that so that we have more stories like our sign shop, and so I, I would be against not putting any funds toward Shedco. I think we have to be a partner with them, because that's a return on investment that we're getting.
But we've been told if they don't get 3,000, they're out of business. 30,000?
No, I don't think we've been told that.
Well, that's kind of what you hinted at, that you would want, you get 30,000.
If we're not able to do what we're mentioning.
Can I say something?
No, go ahead.
Shedco's been around how many years now? Five years?
That I can't tell you, Caroline. I've been back in town for about three and a half years.
I've been around, and they've been coming for money, and I think the city gave them 25, 25, and 30, or 30, 30, and 30, and I'm not sure about the other year. Maybe that was five. I maybe, think this is maybe the fifth year, and I could be wrong, but usually after five years, your business is a go or you're blown, right? You need to be on your own feet after five.
Not in economic development, because it goes back to what I had missed about last Wednesday night, and, and I'm not disagreeing with anything that any of you are saying tonight. I know where you're at, but you look at any community in South Dakota that is our size or bigger, there's very, very few of those where they're self-sustaining without some contribution from a county or city, just because of the nature of the beast.
I can see that.
But you look at your Rapids, yeah, no problem, because they've got the industrial base to keep them going, but the other communities...
Now, I'm not going to interrupt you, but I know these people want to go on, but I have asked for specifics. Just give me a list, you know, what you've done over the years, and I haven't been able to get it, and I'm glad this gentleman came forward and talked to us, and I understand that, but you can see, we just don't have $30,000 to give.
I realize that.
I can answer your question about historic, just as long as we've had the funding software. So if anything happened prior to 2012, I don't have that information, but beginning in May of 2012, 25,000, January 2013, 25,000, January 2014, 25,000, January 2015, 5,000, March 2016, 5,000, June 2016, 5,000, September and December, these may have not been donations.
I think it was 20 total in June.
Oh, so you got $5,000 payments four times in 2016?
Yeah, I think it was maybe 20 in 16, I'm guessing.
Yeah, that's right, and then 3,000 in 2017, so there's...
I know you've got other things to debate. I guess you've got to make the decision that you do, and, and we understand that. When you're talking about what have we accomplished, I know that's not going to change the viewpoint, but the thing that George talks about is increasing the awareness of, what are we doing? Because if we can't increase that awareness, how are we going to get additional people willing to step up and become members and help us to take some of the funding pressure off? Andrea gave you a two-page synopsis in the funding request. There was an excellent article in the Hot Springs Star this week regarding some things, and on the flip side, yeah, if, if you've got questions, let us know.
Okay.
Well, I can only speak for myself. I'm a business owner. We own Hertzong, Gus's, Thomas's Guitar Store. Hertzong's been open for nine years, Gus's been open for five, Guitar Store's been open for seven months. As far as I know, we have never once been approached by Shedco, have, to offer like, you know, services or even to let us know what Shedco does, so I honestly have no idea what Shedco does. And we've been around for a total of, you know, nine years now, Hertzong, Gus's for five, and these are businesses that people stop in town for.
You've been to a meeting, though.
I've been to a meeting, but...
And you have no idea?
I still have no idea what Shedco does.
Because when I went to the board meeting, I thought there was a lot of information, so...
I don't want to get you guys hung up.
Yeah, I'm just...
No, because that's not why we're here tonight. We're not trying to...
Then let's just move on, Bob.
Commenting a question. As far as the, the numbers that I proposed, it was simply to start a conversation. It's not saying that I don't think anything else should be anywhere else. I mentioned those two were near and dear to my heart, so I'll throw some figures out.
Thank you.
You know, everybody else, throw some figures out. If you don't like those, throw them out. That's, that's what it's for, is the discussion. And then the question, you had mentioned the, the number of other cities that are similar to our size that are contributing much more. Do you know economically, are those cities in the same situation that we are in the sense that we're subsidizing an Evans Punge to 90, to the tune of $90,000, and we're subsidizing a golf course to the tune of about $140,000, so...
I understand that.
That's, that's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of mitigating factors that Hot Springs has, that some other communities don't.
Do you have a sense that they're not in that same situation, so it's easier for them to contribute the 30 or 40,000?
It could be. Fulton was one of the ones that we had on the list that we provided to you. You know, I believe that they probably, I'm assuming they have a city pool, which is costing them some money, but not same situation. I think Gregory was also, but no, you know, you look at some of the other communities around there, they don't necessarily have the same unique challenges that Hot Springs has with those, but yet they're still faced with, I use Webster as an example, because I'm familiar with that golf course, which wasn't making my city pool, which I don't know if any city pools that make any money. Now, sure, they were probably not in the same dollar amount correspondingly, so, yeah.
We also contribute our L O D money, 80% of that to our chamber, that some cities that, you know, that makes a function of the chamber or a group partner.
Right, it's funded out of that portion of it.
Funded out of that, yeah.
How much does Edgemont give Shedco?
They have provided about 3,000 in the past.
Equal to Hot Springs.
Yeah, they gave the same amount as Hot Springs did last year. I think they've given us three for the, three years, two years ago.
So probably not equal historically, only the...
No, currently, no.
Just last year.
But going back, you guys got your decision.
Thank you for understanding.
Going back to 2012, you were indicating that the city has given about 100,000 or, or a little over.
Yeah, that's close. Right, any other numbers? Throw up it. Again, the 20 is already budgeted up here. Oops, sorry, didn't mean to do that. Up here, that doesn't mean we have to do it, but it is, why is that happening? They may know.
Can we just have a...
I just want to click around. I don't...
Could we just have a show of hands? Who likes this, than what Bob is presenting?
Well, he needs to finish it.
Well, he was just throwing those out there.
Yeah, I think we...
Go ahead and do your 3,000 for Shedco.
How about as another option, because what do you mean, your 3,000 for Shedco?
No, I said about 3,000.
What does a membership cost for Shedco?
I don't know.
It's anywhere for an individual, it's anywhere from $100 all the way up to, for an individual or business, it's anywhere from $100 all the way up to $2,500, and at the corporate level like, like Hills Energy, there's different levels for those, so, yeah.
Did I hear, Marty, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I guess looking at, so far, nobody's really been here in defense of the helpline, in that one. I know, and it looked like they did have money as well. For Miss South Dakota, obviously, yeah, they, they bring a lot to Hot Springs, but I think Hot Springs does a lot for them as well.
Who put 7,500 in Shedco? I just have to say there, we're a good grief.
Who put what?
Never mind, I took it out.
So what if, could you take and just cap, you know, an amount, like, I don't know, four or 5,000, and, you know, I guess maybe take the top three? I don't think, Miss South Dakota just invested in the Mueller Center as well, so I can't imagine they're going to leave. I think Hot Springs is an incredible place for them to be, and I don't know why they would...
The reason I put 7,500 in there is just to show that that's how much we have left in our already budgeted 20, without changing the 14, 5, but I was just putting it in there.
I'm trying to say, we're not looking for ways to spend on that.
But it don't mean we have to spend that 2,500.
What about splitting the 7,500 for Boys and Girls between Shedco and the Boys and Girls Club?
I think you're making a mistake, you do.
What if you did 5,000 for Boys and Girls, Shedco and Prairie Hills?
That's what I was thinking, and then you're doing 5,000 less, so, but you're...
With the understanding of all these three groups, that we may not have it next year, just know that, because we have some huge expenses coming out.
I think it's important for us to let all of them know, including, and, you know, anything that we can do as a council to help in fundraising, to come to our meetings, if you're trying to organize a benefit, whatever resources we can use besides money, we would be happy to be there.
Okay, show of hands, who goes along with 5, 5, and 5? Should we show our hands?
I wouldn't be opposed to blubbering in either. That still seems like a lot, and we need, we donated 8,000 to the Senior Center.
Yeah, but that...
I mean, it's a different fund.
It's a different fund, but we did give 8,000 to the Senior Center.
What are your thoughts?
Give some numbers.
I'm thinking maybe 1,000 for the Boys and Girls Club and 2,000 for Prairie Hills. There's other means of funding.
Bet you want to give 5,000 to Shedco, but you want to cut the 2,000. Really?
I mean, there are...
There's not a good answer.
There's not.
I know there is.
And, and everybody's entitled to their, their opinion.
I'd be fine with not giving any this year too, honestly, than saving all of it. There's other means of funding for all of those.
And where do you want them to go?
There's United Way, there's fundraisers they could do. Really, I mean...
GoFundMe?
I mean, I guess, is Shedco going to stay around with 5,000?
Boys and Girls Club is tough.
Is Shedco going to stay around with 5,000?
Are we wasting our time?
You know, no matter what you, what you do, and, and everybody that's up there, how do we say that we're more important than Boys and Girls Club?
No, I'm just saying, yes or no. Are you going to stay around with 5,000?
Can't tell you the answer on that, Caroline. We have to, you know, we're not going to just fold up, but it will have an impact.
Oh, yeah, I've seen your budget.
But are we, just depends on what we're able to do with our membership, right? Whether that changes.
Do you have an individual membership, right? Not business, not organization, but individuals?
Yeah, we've got, we've got quite a few that are a member as an individual. That's our membership also, we have, and businesses and individuals.
I hope we could keep it to 10,000, no more than that, and I don't even like that.
I think Miss South Dakota is actually an advertisement for us. We spend a lot of money on advertisement like that.
We already give them so much in line.
Actually, that is an advertisement for people that come all across this, you know, South Dakota.
We've done it two years, is all.
Just a second. You interrupt me every time, so...
Excuse me, I'm very sorry.
Quiet, let's...
Let's, let's pay attention to what we're doing here. So, as, as Miss South Dakota, it does take a very good representation of our town. If we do have a scholarship, then I think that's basically what they use for that, and they have invested a lot of money in our town through the Mueller Center, the sound system and the lights and everything, and I, I know we all appreciate that.
Anyone else have any of their ideas?
Georgia, what were you advocating there?
I think the $1,000 from the South Dakota still needs to be left.
Can I talk now, Georgia? Can I?
Go for it, yeah.
We've only done it for two years, I believe. We've never, it's not a historic thing. It's, they came to us for 1,000, and then now it's 5,000. Misty can look up how long, but I don't believe this is something we, because it was controversial the first time it was done, because we do give them so much of a discount there. I think it's in the thousands of dollars that they save.
Caroline, are you speaking specifically of Miss South Dakota?
Yes.
And I think, I think the funds are different. What that Miss South Dakota donation is for is for a scholarship where the, the other is covered their operating expenses.
But it's still Miss South Dakota.
It's still Miss South Dakota, but it doesn't provide for the scholarships, and that's what the, the $1,000 goes specifically into the, into the scholarship and not to pay operating expenses that I think they have a...
Are we happy with this, or do something else?
I think that scholarship's been around longer than that, because when I was on the council, we talked about that.
Yeah, the scholarship funds, but I don't think we don't, I remember when it was first donated, because I remember when he paid.
The Mueller Center too. I didn't think the city ever charged them for the Mueller Center, this age.
It's a donation.
We charged, but as to it, it was a smaller amount, though. We gave them a little discount, but they paid us a little bit, not...
So, in essence, it was a discounted rate?
Yeah, and we're not doing that. This year, they didn't pay, and we have an agreement that next year they will not pay, and that's...
Because we paid for the lives.
Yeah. That's with the speakers, so it was the speakers who paid for it.
But they don't need it as long anymore either, by doing it the way they are now.
George, can I throw one thing in? Sure. Whatever the city council decides, but let's say you decide that you're only comfortable making, as Marty says, an investment, because I think it is an investment, of 10 or 15,000, that's all you're comfortable with. If that would be the case, pull us out of the mix and give it to the Boys and Girls Club.
So if all you're going to give is 5,000, you don't want it?
I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that, Caroline, but when I look at, I know how critical that funding is to the Boys and Girls Club. How do I justify to them that they got $10,000 less than what they had last year, knowing how much of a struggle it is for them budget-wise every year, and I took $5,000, and they took a $10,000 debt?
I think one of the things Misty reminded us of one time, and it's true, is that no, nobody that comes to us for a donation should depend on our contribution to stay in business. They just, we can't be in that position, be your reason for being in business.
And everybody has their, their points on that, I understand that. And 2020 is going to be a very difficult year for us, because undoubtedly our sales tax revenues will get down substantially because of road destruction, unless we just... No, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying, if that's where the city council feels they need to go, and you're only going to be able to make a commitment of 10 or 15, pull us out of the mix and give it to somebody else, and we would recommend, we'd like to see you put it into the Boys and Girls Club, just knowing how much that benefits the kids.
As beneficial as the Boys and Girls Club is to town, what would be even more beneficial would be to attract some industries, some jobs, and more people to town so that we could expand our tech space.
I agree. I agree, Bob. Do the, does the Boys and Girls Club have that difficult of a time?
I, I don't think they'd be asking for what they're doing.
Definitely, I fundraised for them for quite a few years. We do have a lot of trouble. The businesses in this town are getting hit up so bad, they, you can ask a business and ask them, you know, how many times you're hit up?
The financials...
Businesses can't control the whole thing.
The financials that the Boys and Girls Club provided us, they spend 128,000...
twenty-eight thousand dollars on the kids in Hot Springs. I believe that is the figure, somewhere around there is what they are spending for an investment from us of fifteen thousand dollars, their, their original request. So the return on our fifteen is our kids getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars put back into their programs.
Well, we keep the kids here, I guess that's one thing, we keep the parents here. If we don't have people here, we don't have any of this.
Does anyone have an idea that he just said take five thousand away from Shedco?
Well, if you wanna raise it back up to twenty and give us five, we're not...
I'd love to, I wish we could.
You're not arguing with her, Carol Anne.
I wish we could.
How important is the helpline?
We eliminated it.
They, they, yeah, I guess from the financials they presented to us, what they're looking for is more of a contribution from a community to show that we're investing in them, they're still gonna be around if we don't. And that was my interpretation after reviewing their financials, they're similar to Prairie Hills.
You guys keep talking about twenty thousand, but Bob, you got twenty-five thousand.
That was last year, that's twenty, just in case somebody wanted to know what we donated last year.
And we're not talking about twenty thousand.
Oh, I see, twenty thousand.
Well, appears, we had twenty, I changed it to fifteen, and lowered this and raised this, but we can move all that around, and here's the request.
And then that nineteen thousand could go in the bank?
Well, I think we're sticking our head in the sand if we do that.
And there is no other type of contingency funds that are...
It's called an emergency.
We have contingency, yes.
But we have the one, right?
The fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Emergency.
Yeah, I don't actually wonder.
Didn't they lower it to forty-five?
I thought it was fifty, but, it's not fifty.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought, I thought Thursday we discussed knocking five thousand off.
I often get confused by stuff.
Any more ideas? We've gotta finish this.
Well, I like Bob's vacation story. You know, if we need that money, then we need to reduce our donations, not because we want to, because they're all good causes.
Then just take Shedco off and leave it five and five, and now it's down to ten.
I think they were following, because those are five and three, let's do it with the Boys and Girls Club.
This is not gonna be a real popular sentiment, but if we're really concerned about, if we're really concerned about saving the money, we could start back on page one and go through the budget one more time.
You are so right.
We're right here.
I know, I know, Carol Anne.
Okay.
I understand.
And that's what I said, I mean, we could go, there's gonna be somebody that's going to disagree with the decisions that are made here, any part of that budget, you don't need that, you do need this, some of them are experts in the area, and some pretend to be experts, and we, you know, and we don't know, it's a plan, and again, that plan can be adjusted, and...
But then you're gonna tell these people that? Well, this is just a plan, and like, they gonna come back and ask for more money later? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I'm saying for our whole budget, Carol Anne, it is a plan, and, and what we expand may be more in certain areas, but we're gonna have to adjust. If more police cars break down, and we have to fix them, we're gonna have to fix them. And even though we only have six thousand dollars on the budget line, we're gonna have to fix it. So it's just a, a plan. The contributions are, are set, and we aren't going to be able to, and that's not our purpose, to fund or bail, whether it be a great job, the Boys and Girls Club comes, and they have an emergency in the middle of the year, they're not gonna be able to come to the city, we're not gonna, going to be able to fund that. And if Shedco comes in the middle of the year, we're not gonna be able to fund that, same with Prairie Hill, Prairie Hills Transit, but the services that we have to provide, we are responsible for.
That's why we give a reserve account, right?
That's right.
Are you gonna take Shedco out? They don't want the five thousand.
No, Carol Anne, our point was, if you're only gonna be able to give fifteen, give our five to Boys and Girls Club and let them get ten instead of five.
Okay, but we might not decide to do that. My question is, do you not want the five? You're saying you don't, so, take it out.
No.
I don't think that's...
That's not what I'm saying, if, if, if the decision at some point is to only be able to invest fifteen thousand...
And that is, looking like our decision.
And if that is the way it turns out, then we're saying give our five to Boys and Girls Club. Now, if the decision is to invest twenty, naturally, we'd still like to get as much as the council was comfortable giving us.
Staying at the fifteen, I'm planning to stay at the fifteen, but if push comes to shove, would Shedco be happy with the three you got last year and give the remaining two to the Boys and Girls Club?
I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry. We're gonna catch you there.
So they get seven?
Oh, leave us the same as we were last year?
And give the extra two to Boys and Girls Club?
That's fine, I, I think on the flip side of it, I'd hate to see you cut Boys and Girls Club ten, and you wind up giving us three or five, I'd say give it to them.
Guess I'm eating snacks.
Excuse me. But if that bottom number changes from fifteen, then we want back in.
I think, I tend too much to give the Boys and Girls Club, I do, you know, but I'm just one person. Maybe we need a show of hands?
Have this done?
Let's, let's do it this way. What we'll do is pass around a piece of paper, and I would like everybody to write down what you think your total, our total contribution should be in that bottom line, whether it be fifteen, twenty...
Why can't we just say it all out?
Well, we, we can do, so we can do that. You feel comfortable in doing that, or do, would you...
I think it would be best if we did it secretly, because some people may not be comfortable saying it, they really wanna do it.
And this is for the total amount?
This is for the total amount, and then we go from, from there, so...
Are you gonna average the amount?
I don't, we'll have to decide, and after we, we see if there's a consensus.
Just the total?
This one? Oh, it was supposed to fold up. And this is not voting?
This is just a decision.
This is just a show of numbers.
And, and what we can do, you know, again, we'll come up with a, a bottom line amount that looks like the majority agree with, and then, we don't have to actually decide on how we're gonna split that up tonight either.
Why not?
It, it has to be done prior to the, the budget hearing in January, but the total amount is what we're interested in, because that's what goes into the, into the budget line and, and our, our total, total funding, that, that explained right?
I don't think that's fair to these groups, I think we need to decide tonight.
Well, and that's, that's, that's your decision.
Yeah, we decide before twenty-eighteen, which is when they're asking for the money.
Right. It's not the usual, it should be decided tonight.
I was just thinking, because we really can't vote at these meetings, and if we can't get a consensus, if we can agree on the amount, then we can maybe at a public meeting later have a vote.
Okay, we've got...
Then we just drag this out.
We've got, we've got four that are at twenty, and three that are at zero, a fifteen, and a twelve-five. So, do you have a calculator handy, Misty, and we can average that out?
George, would you repeat that, please?
We've got four, twenty K, one fifteen, one twelve-five, and three zeros.
How many, is that eight?
That's nine.
Nine.
Well, there's nine at the table.
I know, but only eight people, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to act it, which always helps the city council.
Right.
That's the problem.
This has been asked divided by, you know...
It's just a key thing.
Go ahead, look at this.
It's not a key.
Comes up to twelve. That sound right?
The average?
Yeah.
Yeah, about so.
So is that a, an agreeable amount?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Is that what you said?
Twelve, twelve.
Everybody okay with that?
No, not really.
Well, no, very, very...
No, we've got, let's go around, there's twelve, we've got one that's, that's not comfortable with.
I'm fine with that.
Twelve. Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Not really.
And would you go higher or...
I would go higher.
Okay.
Higher.
No, only one person out of nine said around twelve, so that's the extreme minority position, is to do that.
Well, we're averaging.
We're averaging, so... I know that, Bob, only one person said around twelve.
Three, four said twenty.
So you, you wanna go lower?
Yes, lower.
Lower, okay. Marty?
Personally, I'd rather see it higher, I can see that this makes sense as far as consensus. I don't know, it's unfortunate that we have to get to a little baseline with the average. I don't know, to, to make things peachy and happy, I'm...
Now, I wanna go around the room again and ask you each why you think that that, that twelve is sufficient or it isn't. And if you would wanna start, how are you going to defend that twelve against those that may not be able to get a ride on Prairie Transit, because they, they're gonna possibly cut their services, or some parent comes before you and gives you a call and says, you know, I can't, Boys and Girls Club is not gonna be able to support my child?
I think that appeal out of emotion is unfair.
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm giving you a dose of reality, Sam, because you are going to get those calls, and you, as a leader in this community, are gonna have to have an answer to justify what, and those calls will be emotional. And so that's why I wanna make sure we, we understand what we are, are doing as a, as a council when we're, we're setting that, that bar.
Last year, when the city reduced Prairie Hills Transit from ten thousand to fifty-five hundred, in the paper the next week, Prairie Hills Transit said, we have to immediately begin cutting services because the city of Hot Springs cut our budget. We didn't cut their budget for 2016, we cut their budget for 2017. So you're going to get those calls, I got those calls, and what are you doing, cutting our budget? We rely on this service to get us where we need to go.
If I recall correctly, too, Bob, not to interrupt you, but you also had a county commissioner immediately following that, just lambasting the city council for the steps that they took to cut, to, to cut services to the people from Prairie Hills.
I'll, I'll just turn my two cents with that, because, if that's okay?
Absolutely, I think that everybody in the room should, should have an opportunity to speak.
The Boys and Girls Club, I, I just feel, we as a city need to keep our kids safe, number one, and I think that it's unfortunate, maybe they could raise more income from their kids, but I do believe the school on Friday makes a big difference, being closed, and our kids are on the street, and for crime purposes, I think it would increase if we do not have them there available, and I don't know what the number is, I think seventy-five days service, but in the summertime, they are a big service. I mean, we have families that might move away, because they can't afford to work and pay childcare for kids that are maybe old enough to stay at home, but do not take care of themselves in a proper way. They do give them study habits, and they work with them all the time, it's a very, very productive thing, and I recommend any of you to go up and actually see what they do up there. So, to me, the ten thousand is a no, no-brainer. Our Shedco, I've seen what they've brought into town here, I really do not believe we can stick our heads in the sand, pretend like we think that we are so strong that we don't have to have other people help us. They do call there, they don't call maybe Chamber, and I don't know, George, where it's down there, how it worked with the economic development before. We do support the Chamber, maybe the Chamber's where we need to have some of our funding go into Shedco and have them work together, I don't know, but there might be a different way of funding that. Prairie Hills Transit, last year, we did cut them immediately, I did find funds that matched what we had lost, and that was why they stayed. But I don't want them to blackmail us again, I felt like it was a blackmail tactic, just like Bob had said, but I do know that we had tried to support them to keep them here, because it is very, very useful, people use it a lot. We have dialysis patients going up to the V A N, and there are so many things, but people like that don't necessarily have the funds to pay for taxi, and it does have a, the ability to put them in a wheelchair, and that's what we paid for, we helped, we gave ten thousand dollars special so they could do that. That, I do not like blackmail tactics, but that was probably one that we have paid for. We need to keep them here. Two-one-two, I don't know, we could give them a hundred dollars, at least say we need to give them something. Miss South Dakota, I think it's an advertisement. I don't believe we, as a town, can just slip away and pretend like they don't need to have us say, oh, yeah, we want you to come to Hot Springs and support you and stay in Hot Springs. And we did give them a lot of money in the years past for in-kind, because they were there for the whole week, and they used the facility, electricity, they used everything. That's not something that every person knows about, maybe, but it is something that we have given to them. So what we have done now, so far, is support the lighting and the sound system down there. We do have the possibility to have more people coming and use our Mueller Center, so that we can do it without having issues with sound, because our sound system was pretty bad. So as far as what I believe, no, I believe the twelve thousand is too low. And if we're going to go with ten thousand on the Boys and Girls Club, I still think we should at least give a thousand to Shedco, saying that we do want you here. Prairie Hills Transit, if you wanna cut it, you know, another four thousand may cut the difference for Shedco, that's fine, give a hundred to the helpline, but I think a thousand from the South Dakota. We have it there, it's not like we're gonna go out, and we do have funds that we can spend on our streets in a different way, and we have issues that need to be addressed, very serious issues in sewer and water, but that comes from a different fund. I think our streets handle things pretty well, so if we're comparing whether we should put it back into streets and do our sidewalks and all that stuff, we have a lot coming up in 2020. How we fund it is going to help us by keeping these people here, doing what they do, because they spend money in our town and give back to two-one-two, so don't slight them in the bit, the slightest way.
So, calls you get would be, why don't you support the, the police department by cutting the... money for them to get a new car? And again, I'm playing devil's advocate here.
I agree with that.
Are you able to...
I'm able to handle that right now because if we can repair one, I say yes, let's repair it. I am not in favor of buying a new car every year. We had to put ours back, and I know that the pickup came in the next year and it was one that came back.
So, what amount would you recommend?
I still think we should go with twenty thousand.
Twenty, okay. Anyone else have any...
Well, we're sitting here quibbling over five thousand bucks. How many thought it was worth five thousand dollars, six? Fifty? That's my thoughts on it. It's such a, in the overall scheme of things, that's a pretty insignificant amount of money.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems a little bit, I mean, when we're talking about if we're slotting this out for the police car, we had a discussion about that. And I thought it was a reasonable discussion. We came to a reasonable conclusion to raise the vehicle maintenance. So, if somebody had asked me about that, I would say, "We feel that this is important, and we address that by increasing their..."
But what about my street that isn't paved or...
Well, I'd say the same thing.
That needs the resurfacing.
I bet it sounds a lot worse. And I don't know where that is going to make a huge impact on what's going to happen with our streets. I mean, again, it's not a... Even at twenty thousand, it doesn't seem like relatively a lot of money for a lot of goodwill, I think, and a lot of investment in the future for our streets.
And one of the things that I hope we can do, and I've asked Tracy to do, is come up with a street improvement plan so that we have visible what streets would benefit the most from chip seal or need to be done, or what streets would benefit most from an overlay, or what streets in our city that, you know, based on traffic counts and so forth, need to be redone. So, you know, those things are important. We don't have those, that vision ahead yet, but we will, hopefully, with the next budget, you know, that we can definitely discuss that a little more. Anyone else? What about some of you that will vote zero?
We have some huge projects coming up, and I really think we need to save more than what we're saving. It's going to affect us a lot in taxes and business everywhere, really. I don't think we have enough saved up.
I agree.
I agree.
So, that person that comes in to Woolies or calls for a delivery order because they can't get there via Prairie Hills Transit, how are you going to answer that? You mean councilperson?
I think I'm just going to say, I believe this is more important.
I don't think it's the business of the government to be giving donations anyway. But I agree with Skylar. We do need to save money for the huge 2020 road reworking project and the two bridges we need to replace.
Yep.
And every little bit's going to help.
So, where are you going to put this? Have you looked at our income, our, I mean, our financial status in our big statements? Okay. So, where do you want to put this? You're going to put it into the roads now or are you going to...
Can it just stay at it? Yeah. We're going to save it in this fund.
I personally would put some into roads, but I'd save the majority of them. We don't really have a lot in roads right now.
Ms. Steve? Does any of this money have anything to do with contingency fund? I mean, is it money that can be...
No. The two-one-two fund is funded by one-third of the sales, municipal sales tax collected by everyone who shops in Hot Springs.
Okay, so none of this money could be shifted over to contingency?
Well, I'm not saying that. Continuancy is general fund, though. We have a resolution that establishes this fund and where it's set up or ordinance, I guess.
But, you know, I think we could give the situation absolutely more to that...
Their council could do that.
That council could do that. But it's, you know, it's not...
But it's not designed to do that.
Advisable or not designed to.
I mean, they're all worthy causes. They all pull at your heartstrings, but we have to think about how we're spending our money. I mean, we have to, like Skylar said, am I saying that right? We have to save up for the big projects. And the only way we can do it is by cutting things that we don't have to contribute to. It'd be nice if we could all give them all a lot of money.
And again, so, you know, and again, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. So, how is twenty thousand dollars saved going to help pay for half a million-dollar bridge project?
It will be twenty thousand dollars less that we have to come up with.
That's a full round.
And that's kind of, you know, nobody'd ever save anything if, oh, you just owe so much, it wouldn't matter what you do.
But I'm just saying, those are the kind of arguments that people are going to come that are emotionally attached to those issues. And we've got to be prepared to have those answers because, as a council, you are going to vote for a total amount there. And that's a combined decision, whether you vote yes or no. Majority of you will make that decision, and you're going to have to defend it. And I'm just trying to...
I think we all realize that. How do you feel, George?
Well, you know, I would say I feel comfortable with the fifteen about. From a purely patriotic standpoint, constitutionally, I would say zero because I don't think it's the city's job to support private organizations as good as they are. And I mentioned before, I think that's the community's job to support that through the combined federal campaign that would allow that to take place. But we have morphed into a culture where there are needs in our society, people come to government. And as idealistic as it'd like to be and say, "That should not happen," you know, I also feel compassionate in my heart too to say that maybe we could help these organizations a bit. And I do have a passion for our economic development. I think that's a return on investment that we can, we get. You know, I think the five thousand is not going to save them. It's not going to break them if we don't give it. But it does send a message that you, as a council, we as a city, believe in economic development enough. And they realize that we've got wrenching decision that we've all gone through to try to come up with that number. So, I can certainly see, you know, see both sides. But if I had a pin, I think I'd probably put a fifteen number in there. It's not a good...
You've got fifteen up there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, other than...
We kind of came up with our...
Oh, oh, okay.
But, I mean, that data.
I think she goes... Go ahead, Tony.
I would just notice Bob and that is him.
Oh, go ahead.
Half of you have heard me hurring about property taxes and taxes in towns in general. The newbies, you haven't, you have to choose probably. As a taxpayer, I can applaud Skylar, I can applaud Harlan, Sam, and Carol, especially, on not wanting to donate anything. As a citizen of Hot Springs, I guess I would ask, at what point in the future would we ever be able to donate money to any organization following that order? Because if we can't do it now, we certainly are not going to be able to do it next year. We're certainly not going to be able to do it in 2020 with the street project. As a citizen of Hot Springs, I think it is really important to the city, if at all possible, to make the donations that we had discussed before the five thousand. I think in the South Dakota Pageant, the city has helped considerably. As I made the point last week, there's a lot of cities in South Dakota that would love to help the Pageant. There's a lot of money that comes in. And some of them have tried to, and maybe the next time they try, they'll succeed. There's quite a bit of money that comes into Hot Springs because of whether or not that should be a factor of the decision. You know, that's really for the aid of you around that table, the seven. As a taxpayer, I'm certainly not going to begrudge your decision of donating fifteen thousand in light of telling the police department, "You can't have a new car this year." I guess I'm of the opinion that if we're really interested in saving the money, we can go back to square one because there's a lot in the budget that could be cut, and we could save a lot, and we could probably pay for a police car and still make the donations.
And that, you know, I think those are good points. And as we watch that budget this year, and Ms. Steve is one that watches it with an eagle eye, and as those savings are realized, that's something that with budget discipline, that perhaps we can garner some savings throughout the year. And the other thing that I wanted to add to with that fifteen thousand, that comes with proviso, an official letter from the city, that because of upcoming potential expenses, the city will not consider any donated monies in 2019 to 2020 because we just won't have that money available. And that would be, that would go out with, you know, our decision to support and defend that.
Wow, that's a great idea, huh?
You could always just say, "We're out of the business of donations."
You know, and I can see people's compassion in heart here, and I can see people's compassion to say, and both are right. So, whatever decision we make will be a right decision.
Well, and they can plan for it if you tell them, you know, "This is the last time we're going to be able to do this. Plan for it next year, we're not going to be here. We can't be here for you."
Unless we get some huge benefactor just coming in and donating.
But you've got to think, all the things, these contracts we're getting into, the street sweep for the golf carts, we're not going to, we're barely going to have money to buy a police car next year. You know, we really are not going to have this one.
I would like to, I mean, that's probably more realistic, but I would like to think and to envision that Hot Springs is going to, just because of the nature of this town being incredibly special, I think it really is. And I think people are realizing that. And I would, and I don't want to base this on that, but I would rather just envision that, you know, we are going to grow economically and there are going to be good things happening because I'm seeing that.
I think there are good things happening. I don't think it necessarily has a dollar sign.
No, and that's what I said. I don't think it has anything to do with this. I'm just, rather than say we're going to be, you know, I guess that's just more of something to put out there. I agree with Bob. And just back again to like, we had somebody who was a businessman came in, and I don't think he had any ulterior motive. I couldn't imagine that he would. I don't know what he would be. He's a member of Shedco. He's on the board. He's a member of Shedco. He's on the Shedco board. Okay. So, but if he's feeling his business is going to benefit, and if it wasn't here because of Shedco, then what else? I mean, what is he going to get out of Shedco if he's already established as a business? I'm just to say that he's...
He's a member of the board of Shedco recently, but he's a member of the board of Shedco because he's seen what Shedco has done to help his business.
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't know. Anyway, it does feel like these things all will, rather than just be purely a donation, will contribute to our bottom line in some way. It might not be a tangible fixed number, but I think it just, it's one of those things that is intangible and will benefit the city.
But remember, we've given them about a hundred thousand dollars.
Who?
Shedco.
A hundred thousand.
Shedco thousand, or...
Since their inception, we've given them quite a bit of money, and we haven't really had much to show for it. I mean, we haven't because they can't write it down. They can't give you a list. Intangible, okay. You know, I understand. I'm hopeful that maybe there's some other way we can find some money to funnel into economic development. Some, I've talked to George about it. I'm not going to get into it right now, but there may be other ways that, you know, we're trying to look at to get some money for economic development, whether that would be to Shedco or someone else, I don't know.
Well, like they said, there's other towns that have, like, you can help.
And this decision, quite frankly, may affect who we hire as a city administrator. And then, we may want to focus on someone that has had economic development experience as much as managing and overseeing departments and so forth.
Are we back, and are we going to say fifteen? When we put those numbers down, we agreed on twelve, is what you came up with? And now, we're back to fifteen?
I just, that's, somebody asked me what I thought, and that was my opinion.
If you want to go to twelve, real quick, for four.
Yeah, let's do it. Twelve was the average of the agreement.
Okay, can we live with, I just want to go home. Can we live with fifteen? I mean, I, you know how I feel about it. I wouldn't give anything.
Five, five, five?
Yeah. But, no, not Shedco.
Okay, ten and five?
No, I mean, because he really told us. I think what he's saying is, they're done. You know, they can't function without thirty thousand dollars.
No, I don't think so.
You know, well, that's...
That was kind of feeling I had to...
That was my take, Georgia, so you don't need to tell me how to see my...
You can think however you want. I'm just saying I didn't take it that way.
Yeah, that's the difference of opinion, isn't it? We've got to agree to disagree.
The point is, we have ten and five. Do we want to show up hands and then we can go home?
We can, however we all want to do it.
Well, I mean, we got to do something. You know, that seems to be what that Bob proposed it. You know, why can't we just see, like, show up?
It's all your fault. All those in favor of fifteen, raise your hand.
Or how you support it.
All those in favor of twelve, five, raise your hand. Okay, fifteen's out.
Okay. Thank you.
Were you leaving it where it is? Boys and Girls Club and Prairie Hills Transit?
Is that acceptable?
Show up hands.
No.
Well, then, don't show your hands.
Say, "All those in favor of leaving what we have up there, ten and five, raise your hands." All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion. Consensus.
Consensus is... Turning, shutting the table.
Yes.
Camera's going off.